Okay, we're gonna start with that.
I'm sorry if I have to read the last paragraph. Thank you, everybody. That's fine, don't worry about it.
Okay. You ready? This regular meeting of the Board of Education for June 25th, 2019 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. We also have interpreters with us this evening, and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language into which they'll be interpreting, and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Dobre vichy, e se vam nujen ruski perevod, mien zavod marii, ya bud nahadiza v kule, spasiba.
Kichao kivit, nek kivit kentongi dvi vijevi nevietnam, xing kivit ve chiusao ko hojchung, se go tong dvi vijevi nek kivit. Kamon kivit.
Hola i muy buenas tardes, me yamo Daniel, le voy a estar ofreciendo interpretación en español para los que la necesitan. Les deseo un feliz verano a todos, gracias.
Mo si chungwen fanyi, ja ni xue wo ban man de wa, qing ni gao suo. Wo yi shou, eh, chungwen wa fanyi, yu ge ni xue wo ban man de wa, wo yi xing ni gong de wo te.
Lu qu du shou ma la hadi rap du lu fu siro, nina aska le imao.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the rest of the meeting, board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the business agenda for a separate discussion and vote? Okay. So we'll move on to student and public comments. Before we begin the public comment period, I'd like to review the guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen without distraction from electronic devices or papers. Board members will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Powell to distribute to us. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of the testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Powell, do we have anybody signed up for student or public comment?
We have two. We have Virginia La Forte and Steve Buell.
My name is Virginia La Forte, L-A space capital F-O-R-T-E. I came here tonight to speak about the allocation of 2017 bond funds. As we all recall, voters earmarked $150 million of the latest and largest bond in Oregon history for remediation of lead-based paint, security systems, fire sprinklers and alarms, radon checks, new roofs, and the list goes on and on and on. And that's just, you know, like I said, to name a few. But this $150 million in funding was called out during the development of the language for the voters when they decided whether or not to support the 2017 bond. It was made clear by the bond committee, of which I was a member, as was Director Brim Edwards, that this funding would not be commingled with any improvements related to the modernization of the high schools. The funding was intended for existing buildings. At the time, PPS estimated that its deferred maintenance bill was $1.2 billion, so $150 million was just scratching the surface. Through a public records request for budget summaries and a GL detail report specifically for the 2017 bond funds, it took about six, maybe 60 seconds to find $8 million of middle school conversion costs billed to the bond, with only $2 million repaid, early retirement benefits billed to bond funds, $116,000 of group health insurance benefits billed to bond funds, $877,000 for a bond performance audit expenses billed to the bond, and $225,000 in credits for the 2015 PAT settlement accrual, also described as unemployment compensation and Marshall-Swing Space 2012 bond. And again, that was just a few minutes of going through the data. Of that $150 million that I was talking about at the beginning, $79 million, over half, has been reclassified out of environmental health and safety projects, leaving us with less than half for what was considered to be an environmental health and safety bond. How did I find this out? Through a public records request, which brings me to my next point. I read with great interest and surprise, I did not know about it, the editorial in yesterday's Oregonian. PAT and several board members committed to an agreement requiring PPS to delay the release of public records for seven days so that PAT can weigh in on whether or not it should be produced. The law is very clear. PPS is to produce public records without undue delay. Seven days to potentially argue over whether or not to produce records is an illegal undue delay. PAT has argued that this simply codifies the law. That's a misrepresentation of the law. State law requires that a union rep must be notified of exempted records being produced. Exempted records are related to things like medical issues, which makes sense. This agreement requires the union to be notified of all records being produced and to delay that production. Public records must be produced according to the law. This ensures that we're all treated equally. And I'm certain that the three parents mentioned in this public records request that was submitted by PAPSa a couple of years ago, not only it wasn't the three parents, board members, members of the press, it's, it's, well, I'm not gonna say what I really think. But it's a public records request, and those parents that were named by public school administrators didn't have any courtesy of being notified that their principals were requesting public record communications between them and board members. If that is an intimidation, I don't know what is. So you just, you don't get special treatment. The laws are written the way they are to ensure, again, that we're all treated the same. PPS is trying to rebuild trust after spending $200,000 trying to hide public records, misappropriating bond funds. They've spent $800,000, not $600,000 when you look at the detail, on this bond performance audit. All of this is detracting from public trust. We need to follow the law, be transparent, because we have to pass future bonds in order to keep our students and staff safe. And we're not gonna get there by fudging and hiding information. So that's really all I have to say, so I'm a little nervous. I don't know. It's a great question.
Mr. Buell, can you, if you, if you can hold your comments until...
My time's up. I don't know where it is.
Is it $79 million short?
Yeah.
My name's Steve Buell, B-U-E-L. I'd like to take this time to publicly thank Paul Anthony for his work on Portland School Board. There has probably never been a director who has worked harder than Paul at his job. His dedication to his community has been massive, and his dedication particularly to the health and welfare of the children in our schools is probably unparalleled in the history of Portland School Board. But what really set Paul apart was that he constantly put children at the forefront of his decision-making. This is a very rare trait for big-city school board members. It is a maximum of education, that what is good for teachers is generally good for children also. A happy and respected teacher makes a better teacher. And since teachers interact with children daily for hours, it makes sense. But it is different for school board members and administrators. A board member often gets caught up with being important, satisfying their peer group of adults, be they administrators, other board members, or supporters and friends, or making decisions based on politics. And since these people don't interact daily with children, their own needs can get pushed to the forefront. This need is more powerful than people realize and pretty much overtakes the actions of a school board member and often other public officials as well. Children and what is good for them often get left behind. Paul withstood these influences and kept children right up front all the time. I thank him for that, and so should every right-minded citizen of our fair city. There is a lesson here for the three new school board members. Can you withstand the pressure and keep children at the forefront of your decisions so that for once we could have a school board which truly puts the needs of children ahead of the needs of adults? It is much harder than you think. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you again for your comments. Please feel free to connect with the board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you want to follow up at the board or board office. Superintendent's report. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Moore. We have a few slides we're gonna put up. Good evening, directors. While the school year's come to a close for our students, there's no slowing down at PPS, as evidenced by tonight's ambitious agenda by the board and staff actively providing summer professional learning activity and doing a lot of planning for the coming school year. I'll be a little bit brief, but I did want to share a few important announcements. Let me start by talking about some leadership changes in the district. I want to congratulate Dr. Craig Quayar, who has occupied the role of Chief of Schools at PPS overseeing our principal supervisors who are charged with supporting all of our schools. I have promoted him to be our next Deputy Superintendent for Instruction and School Communities. Moving forward, Dr. Quayar's new scope of responsibility will expand to include not just the school portfolio, but also student support services and teaching and learning. Craig has proven to be a positive collaborator and has always remained focused on supporting our school communities to produce continued improvement and capacity building. He understands the importance of working alongside our educators, school leaders, and staff in our shared goal of raising outcomes for students. He and I see eye to eye and share a common theory of action and philosophy about leadership. And as a new member of the district's executive leadership team, I look forward to partnering with him even more closely. I'm thrilled to have him in this position and role effective July 1st. We've also filled two other critical vacancies, a Chief of System Performance and a new Title IX Director. Dr. Russell Brown comes to PPS from Maryland, where he has served as Chief of Accountability and Performance Management for the Baltimore County Public Schools. His arrival is a big milestone in our journey to become a more data-driven and data-literate organization. Russell is a nationally respected leader whose deep research background includes the management and conducting of program assessments, accountability structures, and boundary review processes. In Baltimore, he implemented a new performance management system, designed a new model for enrollment projections, a model that's proven 99% accurate, and led continuous improvement processes in that large urban school district. Prior to Baltimore, Russell was Deputy Chief of Organizational Accountability at Cleveland Municipal School District. He's written and presented extensively on issues such as student safety, student achievement testing, and educational research partnerships. He's also worked professionally as a university instructor and a children's mental health therapist. Russell's extensive subject matter expertise and stellar track record at two large urban school districts illustrates why we're so fortunate to have him join our leadership team here at PPS. I look forward to introducing him to you in person as soon as he finishes his relocation here to Portland. Dr. Obanion comes to PPS from Portland State University, where she has worked since 2001 and has served as Director of the Learning Center and previously as Associate Director since 2016. She is a highly-trained Title IX investigator with multiple credentials, including with the Oregon Attorney General's Task Force for Sexual Assault Prevention and Title IX Investigation and Compliance Certification from Fisher &amp; Phillips. Dr. Obanion earned two degrees from Portland State, a Master of Science in post-secondary adult and continuing education, and she also possesses a Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership. In this crucial position, she will be taking the lead in assuming, assuring that the district complies with Title IX, the federal law that prohibits gender discrimination in schools. She will make sure that students, families, educators, administrators, and the PPS community are providing quality learning and development opportunities and will assist in investigations on Title IX issues. I very much look forward to having these two very experienced professionals joining our team. And we're coming to the end of Pride Month. As always, PPS was well-represented during last weekend's Pride Parade through downtown Portland. I was pleased to be able to join this annual celebration of our LGBTQ communities and happy to see such support both from within our district and throughout the greater community. I also wanted to just give a brief update on our summer offerings, Summer Scholars. Our main program is already off and running. Session one started on June 17th and will wrap up on July 30th. The second session gets underway on July 8th. This is a credit recovery program that serves about 3,000 students. That's about 1,500 per session. And this year, for the first time, we're also going to proceed with offering a summer arts academy. We wanted to make sure and pilot this. We'll be hosting it at Tubman Middle School for about 150 students. Other programs also will include our Sun Steam Academy, a Mandarin DLI Language Camp, which is our nationally-recognized early kindergarten transition program, and of course childcare programs throughout the district. My hope is that as we move forward and with enhanced resources from the Student Success Act, that we can expand on extended learning opportunities for students in the coming years. So tonight marks another huge milestone for the development of our vision. We spent months engaging hundreds of students, family, school, and district leaders, as well as community stakeholders, in a deep conversation about our shared vision for the future of the district and our graduates. Together, we have described and articulated a graduate portrait, which is what we want our future graduates to know and be able to do in their quest to become global leaders. We also collaborated in identifying the educator essentials and the system shifts that are gonna be necessary to support students to achieve this portrait. Tonight is the board's opportunity to make the final product of all of this work, our vision, PPS Reimagined, official. I look forward to that discussion. I also look forward to rolling this out to the broader community so that they can see the ideas and aspirations that stakeholders in the broader community have for, have defined for the future of our students and district. I want to thank the dozens and dozens of people who had a hand in making this a reality, especially the members of the core team and the guiding coalition, who spent so many hours in planning events, recording responses, meeting with stakeholders, engaging in dialogue, and so many other tasks and projects. Also want to thank Sonia and Fiona, our team from Prospect Studio, whose professional guidance and careful facilitation ensured the initiative made it to you tonight. We're gonna hear from them a little later in our program. And also tonight, we hope to put the final bow on our 2019-20 budget. Also want to thank and acknowledge the TSCC for reviewing our budget and holding its hearing earlier this afternoon and for affirmatively approving the PPS budget prior to our board's final note, final vote tonight. And again, I look forward to the summation of what's been an intense but very productive effort to allocate our dollars in a future-focused and equitable manner. I'm convinced this budget puts us in a position to accelerate some of the foundational work we've been doing all year, aimed at better ensuring outcomes and equitable opportunities for all of our students. The document's been described as more transparent and understandable, and we're glad that we were able to produce that type of a document. I want to make sure and thank and appreciate our talented budget and financial crew led by Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz, Chief Financial Officer Cynthia Lay, and their teams. And finally, can't end my report without acknowledging and honoring our departing board members who we just recognized before tonight's meeting. Director Rosen for your steady hand, calm and thoughtful approach to even the most contentious issues. We've had a few, we'll miss you. Director Anthony for your dedication constantly to uncovering the details and maintaining a deep advocacy for the importance of our, supporting our students. Director Asparza Brown, your deep knowledge of literacy and special education. Your experience as the only director of color on the board has provided a critical perspective. And Nick, if, I feel like we've been like celebrating your departure for a few weeks.
Never too much.
But never enough. I want to make sure and call out your courage and conviction in making sure student voices remain always represented. Thank you, all of you, for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to ask Nick Paisler to present his final student representative report.
Here we go. I kind of said a little bit, that was impromptu up there, so I kind of said, said a little bit of it up there. But I guess my, my thoughts for this final student rep report was just, again, looking back over the year and kind of reviewing what I worked on and what I, in tandem with working with the district student council, worked on. And so, you know, bringing things up as the, our leadership summit in December and getting kids together for that event and making that a yearly event that we're gonna take on. And so like Maxine next year will work on that. We amped up our social media platform, so we're trying to, as, you know, for more outreach and more communication to our PPS community. And really just trying to elevate student voice and importance on the board. So there was, I've, there was a lot of meetings this past year where I invited students to come and sit in and get, let them know more about the board and let them know more about the district and what the district office does. So I'm really excited to see that continue. And then our past, our few final DSC meetings this year, we're kind of working towards, you know, voting in next year's student representative, which is now Maxine. And I'm super excited for her next year, and I'm really hoping that with her experience from being at the district for two years and working closely with me this year on many things that we, that we took care of this year, I'm really excited for her to keep continuing what we've been doing. And I do wish her the best of luck next year. And yeah, I'm just, I'm really happy that I got to spend this year at this table and learn a lot, meet a lot of great people. I mean, this is an amazing building. There's so many amazing people here. And I think it's just gonna get better. I know it's gonna get better. So it's, it's all up from here. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again for all your work this year.
Of course.
We all wish you the best. And I should just make note, Nick has to go to work early in the morning. So he is not gonna stay for the rest of this meeting, which will likely be rather lengthy. So at some point, he's going to, he's gonna get up and leave. But I hope at some point he'll come back and visit us.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna be all over Twitter. Just watch out.
Okay, the next item is the superintendent's evaluation. Earlier this year, the Board of Education adopted the standards for Superintendent Guerrero's performance evaluation for the 2018-19 school year, using a modification of the Oregon School Board Association's Framework for Superintendent Evaluation and correlated it with the district and board's shared work plan. We use these standards for Superintendent Guerrero's current performance evaluation for the period of July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. The board has reviewed the superintendent's performance in light of the performance standards and the progress of the shared work plan, and earlier shared this evaluation with the superintendent. Board members, would you like to provide comments? Go ahead. Somebody go.
Five or six years of, you know, not having to turn it on. So I want to preface my comments about the superintendent's evaluation by saying that I am going to support the extension of the superintendent's contract for two years, which is our next agenda item, so I'll just smoosh my comments together. And I'm doing that in, with a, sort of a focus that not only have we had a year and a half of great progress, but I think we have really benefited from strong and stable leadership and student-focused leadership. And that is what you've provided. And I'm looking forward for another two years or three years altogether. I do want to say that this was, if I look at what we, the work plan that we agreed upon, it was a foundational year and a year in which really getting PPS back on track. So the partial year one was sort of getting systems going, and this was another year of that. And I think we are sort of set to really accelerate the work in the next year, and I think that makes me really optimistic. I do want to note that, and this isn't, this is really for the board, that there was a fundamental weakness in the evaluation system this year, that both the instrument but also the goal setting, it happened late. We, it was more activity-focused and really systems-building focused. And going forward, I'm looking forward to us having, in concert and with the superintendent, setting student-focused goals that really bring a crispness to the work ahead. And that there's, you know, I want to acknowledge that there was so much hard work that happened this year by the superintendent and the entire leadership team and under your leadership. And next year, having that focused specifically on student outcomes, I think is what is going to really be the key for our community and our students. And again, that's not a, it's more a board-focused issue that we have, that this year's evaluation was more activity-based. But next year, I think all the, all the pieces are in place to have an excellent year. And we've had both in the written evaluation, but also the conversation we had last week, I think was a really full and comprehensive discussion about all the good things that happened last year and the conditions that need to, and things that need to happen this coming year to make it one in which we're all proud to be a part of and with you at the helm of the leadership. So thank you for your really hard work this year.
I agree, Julia, with what you had to say, both in terms of the process of the evaluation, but also the, the role of the board. And I think we all acknowledged that it was an unusual year because in your second year, we were definitely still engaged in rebuilding this system and completing the hiring of your senior management team and significantly restructuring a lot of the way that work gets done from the central office and the way that our schools get supported. And so I think there was a general sense in this evaluation process that we have most of those systems in place. And this year, it's about culture. It's about really investing in the culture of our organization and supporting all of our building leaders and all of our teachers, both with the nuts and bolts of a, of a standards-based curriculum, but also just with leadership development and professional development and really making sure that the work of the central office is focused in service to our schools. And I think that's, that's the, the guiding ethos that you have used in terms of how you've decided to rebuild the central office. But it's important for us to always keep that in mind. And I think we're all excited, our continuing board members, as well as our incoming board members, about the board having much more of a focus on spending our time looking at student achievement metrics. And some of our student achievement numbers are, you know, really sobering, and that's why we all do this work. That's why our professional educators do this work too, to really move the systems. And the way to, the way that we want to see the system moved is by our kids doing better, by more kids being able to read in the third grade, and by more kids who are passing high school math actually being proficient at high school math and being prepared to do well in, in college. And so I think this is the year where that, hopefully it will become evident to the public that that's how we're gonna spend our time. And we really couldn't do that if the fundamental work of rebuilding the systems and getting the right people in place wasn't done. And I think that, that you've really done that, and we look forward to just starting to see some of the fruits of that labor this year. And I think that was a lot of what we focused on in this evaluation process. So next year, a cleaner evaluation that adheres, cleaner in the sense of what our expectations are and how we lay them out and how it adheres to best practice for school boards, because this is one of our very most important roles, evaluating the superintendent. And I think we're all excited about seeing that shift in how we do our work. But we're very, I'll speak for myself, just grateful for your efforts, your incredible dedication to this role. You arrived with very few systems in place, and now we're seeing most everything functioning well and needing to, you know, needing to tune to things in a slightly less hair-on-fire kind of way. kind of way.
Well, I have been in public schools prior to my work at Portland State for about 18 years. And in that time, I've been part of five school districts and seen many superintendents and many school staffs. And in that time, frankly, I have not seen anybody work as hard and with such dedication and urgency as you have in the short time that you have been here to make the changes that we need. And so many of those systems have been created here. I mean, it was a tremendous amount of work in the last 21 months. And I concur with everybody that we now have systems in place, that the pivot will be looking at student outcomes. But I also know that you are dedicated to not just some students, but to move the dial for all of our students and particularly those that have been left behind by policies and processes in the past. So for me, I am incredibly grateful for your leadership here and for taking us on and the tremendous work that has been required to rebuild us. And as I leave, don't want to leave for far, but in my, you know, this role is I am very optimistic that there is so much in place to continue really moving us towards that high-performing districts. I have no doubt that this district will get there under the current team and with your leadership. So as from my perspective, I'm grateful, and you've done a tremendous amount of work. And I see the work because I also have been involved in school districts as part of my life and really feel like we, one of our most important roles certainly is to hire and supervise a superintendent. And I think we did an outstanding job. That is, you know, one of the things that I think as a board member I'm most proud of. There's work to do, and we know, as Amy says, Director Konstant said, that there's the next level of work. I think the next iteration will be on culture and really establishing relationships. But for me, that work of putting systems in place was foundational. That has to come first. And you really dedicated your focus to laying the bricks here that will move us ahead. So I thank you very much. And it has been an amazing amount of work, and I am honored to have been a part of this and excited to see where we're going to go as a district in the next year and the coming years. And I'll move ahead, too, to say that I will, I'm very much in support of a contract extension as well. Thank you.
So I want to agree with a lot that's been said. My number-one message for you for the coming year would be dial it down a notch. You've heard me say this before. This is a marathon. This isn't a sprint. We all understood the urgency that you brought to the work and the incredible hours you've put in. And now it's time for a more sustainable pace. I speak as somebody who knows where we were two years ago, but also knows where we were 20 years ago in this district. Many of the issues that you have led us in and your team, it's not a solo effort, over the last two years have been issues that have been dogging this district for decades. And to see the progress that you have brought in the last two years just reaffirms what Director Espaza Brown said about where you stand compared to, certainly compared to, well, I'll just say compared to other superintendents. Whether it's we finally have an educational vision that we'll be voting on tonight, don't want to get ahead of the game, that's just foundational and values that set us up for a strategic plan that we have not had for decades. How can you have an organization this large without a strategic plan? Well, that kind of explains why we haven't gotten the results that we wanted for our kids. The progress made on student safety and watching their white tourist report recommendations, done, 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 just about wrapped up. You work in the legislative session, your work in collaboration with other superintendents around the state, with COSA, with our educational partners like Portland State and Portland Community College. You've really established us and played an incredible leadership role there. The vision process is really a blueprint going forward for how we engage with the community and with students. Again, all these things, and I want to, my slight disagreement with the earlier comments, we have the start of systems in place, but it's still more work to go on those systems. So a big start on the balanced assessment system where we have common assessments across the district, which is a big piece of bringing equity to results in the classroom, which is the core of why you're here for our students. We've got a good start, but more work to do there. But again, that hasn't been around for the two decades I've been involved in our schools. We heard from the, okay, TSCC Tax Supervising Something Committee.
Conservation Commission.
Conservation Committee. So this is an independent group that looks at the budgets of all public bodies in the county. And today, they reaffirm that our budget process and budget documents were much improved over the previous year. And of course, we had a clean budget, a clean budget audit. The focus on the budget on student outcomes, so especially for students receiving special education services, for the enhancement of our multi-tiered systems of support, the social and emotional support of our learners, which are totally integrated with curriculum that you bring, and on and on and on. So many positives across the board in so many different realms. Thank you.
Okay, I won't, I won't say too much since it's pretty much all been said. But I want to echo what everybody else said. I think in the space of 21 months, an enormous amount of work has been accomplished, just an astonishing amount of work. The bad news is that it was all completely necessary. When you walked in the door, PPS was in trouble, in real trouble. And when we talk about the foundational work, I'm not sure that the public out there really understands how foundational this work has had to be. We're talking basic structures totally absent. I mean, the amount of work that is, that has been required to just dig us out of holes that have been dug over the last at least two decades has been, has been enormous. And I think what we're looking at is a completely unprecedented scope and pace of change in PPS, and it's all in the right direction. And I mean, I, I agree that we've, well, I've been watching it all. You and your team have done all the work here, and you have built the new structures and processes that were completely absent before. I don't think we're finished yet with, I mean, I tend to agree with Director Bailey. Like, we are well on our way, but there's still a lot more foundational work left to do. But we are now poised, I think, at a new, a new era for PPS. I mean, in the space of 21 months, you have brought PPS to the point where we really can start talking about improving student outcomes. And, you know, for as long as I've been paying attention, people, PPS has talked about it, but we've never had the ability to actually do much or to even know what we were doing out there in schools. And I, you have, you have brought a focus on students that has been absent in PPS for far too long. And so, like others, thank you for everything you've done. Thank you to your team. Thank you to all the teachers and the principals and the counselors and the, everybody out there in schools who are, who are doing the work on a day-to-day basis to transform this district for students. It's been, it's been a busy two years. It's been an exhausting two years. But I think we're now at a point where students in particular are going to start seeing changes. It's going to start showing up in outcomes for students. It's going to start showing up in more equitable offerings in programming. It's going to, you know, in this next year, I think we're going to really start seeing some dramatic changes in, in school climate and in, you know, a change in the organizational culture to one of continuous improvement and really focusing on student outcomes. I'm looking forward to it. We are already engaged as a board in developing goals. And we, as a board, have pledged to have a small set of very specific goals in place by August 15th that will serve as the kind of, the focus for the work over the next year. And in, you know, working in collaboration with you and the staff to come up with metrics that are really going to drive the kind of change our students deserve. So, okay, I went on longer than I intended to. Thank you.
May I, Chair? Thank you, Directors. I appreciate the expression of confidence. Thank you for recognizing the rate of progress in a relatively short amount of time in an organization of this size and nature. I mean, it's been 21 months. And I actually have to give credit for that progress to the people on the front line, our educators, our support staff, our principals, senior staff and their departments. It's a conversation that's infusing every layer of the organization. This is not a one-person endeavor. And I think we're pleased with the rate of progress, but we're not going to be satisfied until we start to see the needle move for all kids in this district, which has to start with equitable supports, interventions, making sure they have the opportunity, they have a right to. And then I think we can, we can expect those outcomes to follow. District improvement is not a linear process. And so there will, you know, I can only commit that there will continue to be sort of ups and downs, but a continued move northeast, which is sort of high-performing, high-functioning characteristics of a well-functioning school system. So we're going to stay committed to that. It would have been difficult to head out to schools and raise our expectations without having our own house in order, which is why you saw a focus a bit more inward on the central office so that we would be stable and our core functions would be in place so that we can, we can begin the work to work more closely in partnership with our school leaders in diagnosing and assessing their development and their capacity and how we can leverage the resources we have to support that, that learning. School systems are learning organizations. And so we're going to keep making that investment of time and energy. And I'm going to continue spending time visiting schools, as I always do, checking in with our students, teachers and principals, and look forward to doing even more of that as we embark sort of on this next chapter of work, which by nature has to work really closely with our school leaders because they're our agents of change on the ground, and our job is to serve and support and be responsive to them. And they also deserve the opportunity to develop their own leadership. And so we're excited about a number of initiatives. We'll be launching this coming fall. I look forward to describing those that are going to focus exactly on that goal, elevating our school leaders' ability to lead continuous improvement and serve as instructional leaders and to really leverage the moves that they make every single day in our school community. So I look forward to working hand-in-hand with our team on that. So I came to Portland. I knew it would be a challenge. It hasn't, it hasn't let me down in that regard. As I always say around the office, I'm never bored. Every day is another 14-hour opportunity to make a difference for kids. So I look forward to continuing in that vein, although I'm taking Director Bailey's advice to turn it down a notch, given this is a marathon. But it was a little bit necessary in the beginning. But we're not in triage mode anymore, and that's a good place to be. So just an appreciation to the broader team here at Portland, who's really made this, this joy, we say joyful learning, but you have to have joyful leadership as well. So thank you for as hard and challenging and complex as the work is. We do this because we're sort of built for this, and we know that it's intended to make a difference for children and students everywhere. So thank you for the continued opportunity.
So I'd be remiss if I didn't raise this. So the board is rightly focused on your leadership because that's, that's our job. And you're really focused on the centralized system because I think the central office systems and leadership, you know, had, there were, there are big gaps when you arrived, and that's what we're focused on. So I'm really glad to hear you speak of the broader system. Again, from the board standpoint, we're really focused on your leadership and the system here. But you're focusing on the broader system this next year and the feedback loops and really creating and supporting our school leaders and then the classroom leaders that we have is what is going to make the difference in the, in our students' outcomes. And so I don't want to just leave the impression that we're just focused on the system here at the central office, but you, you're focusing on and supporting the broader school system and leaders in it is going to make, be what gets us to our next step. Thanks.
One advantage of having served as a para and a teacher and a principal, always entitled in schools and underserved communities, is understanding, and my research as an educator, as a graduate student, is an understanding how all layers of the organization, how all the parts have to work in coherent ways to get at shared goals. And so I've understood that from the very beginning, that once we stabilize, that we would, we would need to turn our attention in that direction. So I'm looking forward to that work because that's actually what I enjoy most.
And you gave a very nice little tutorial on that at the TSCC hearing this afternoon. Okay, the board will now consider Resolution Number 5907, a resolution to approve the superintendent's performance appraisal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Espaza Brown moves. Director Konstant seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5907. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5907. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Resolution 591, 5907 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Paisler voting.
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay, the next item is the superintendent's contract extension. Board of Education has reviewed Superintendent Guadalupe Guerrero's performance and determined that he has been a strong leader of the district since he was hired in 2017 and that the district is well-served by extending his contract for two additional years through June 30, 2022 on the terms set forth in the amended contract. Board members, would you like to provide any comments? Okay, the board will now consider Resolution Number 5914, a resolution to authorize superintendent contract extension. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Bailey moves. Director Konstant seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5907. Director Constam seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5907. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment? Nope. Okay. Any further board discussion? The board will now vote on Resolution 591, uh, 5907. 5914. Sorry, got two different numbers here. Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5914 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. That's Student Representative Paisler voting?
Yep.
Okay. There you go. Congratulations.
You get to vote yep on your last night.
Okay.
It'll be an honor to serve through June 2022. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're moving on to a second reading of the reserves fund policy.
I need to announce that there is a correction to be made on the policy. And I know that's a surprise to all because it was just brought to my attention two minutes ago. And that is under Section Two. I'm looking at the clean copy, if that's the easiest to read probably. And I'm looking, I'm getting what's on the website currently, what's posted there. And it says in the Section Two, in the first sentence, it ends with from five to ten percent of annual general fund, it should be revenues instead of reserves. The word should be changed from reserves to revenue.
Can you repeat that, please?
Okay. So, if you're on the second section, it starts with, it is the goal of the board to fund and maintain a reserve in the general fund that shall range from five percent to ten percent of annual general fund revenue.
That's what it says. Okay, the, in the copy that we were given, it says revenue.
I'm so glad, but what's posted on the web says reserves. So, I'm, I'm concerned about which, what is the final version.
I think note to someone out there that we need to change the document that's posted.
We'll, we'll update that after, at the end of the board meeting.
I'm sorry, what?
We'll update it at the end of the board meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for the confusion.
So, the answer was it will be updated at the end of the board meeting?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
So, this is a policy that has been before the board already. This is the second reading. We had no additional public comment during the twenty-one days. And just as a refresher, that the key changes, we're still retaining the goal of setting adequate reserves. This policy removes the dates that were actually embedded in the policy, which is not best practice. We also added some language to the policy that lays out, and this is for future, future boards, lays out the appropriate times when reserves should, should be used and when they shouldn't be used. And we've also added new language that defines when, when reserves are expended, that there needs to be a plan to replenish them within three fiscal years. So, this very much retains, I think, the spirit that, of the, of the policy. It tightens it up, removes some dates, and I think makes clear that there's a commitment from the board and the district leadership to maintain reserves and to use them appropriately. And when they're, when they're used appropriately, then to replenish them so that we're ready for the next time that we need to use them appropriately. And I wanna thank the CBRC and Director Moore, who provided a lot of history about the reserve policy and, I think, improved, improved the language. So, and if, it's important that we adopt it this evening, the, the second reading, because it ensures that our budget that we're about ready to, to adopt is aligned with, with the policy.
I wanna reiterate the thanks to the CBRC and just say that this was an example of, I think, a really constructive policymaking process because this did change fairly significantly from the first time it was brought forward to the Policy and Governance Committee and through a lot of really deep discussion and a little bit of back and forth and a lot of insights from community members and the CBRC taking their role very seriously and making sure that as an appointed body of this organization, that they really were respected in their function was really important. And I think we did agree at a much better policy.
And I'd like to point out something that may escape notice from those who haven't been knee-deep in this kind of stuff. So, in Paragraph Two of the board policy, it makes mention of the goals for the operating contingency, it's the five to ten percent that we, that you mentioned, will be set as part of the district's long-range financial plan. And the policy thereby assumes that there will be a long-range financial plan for the district, which would be the first time in living memory, as far as I know, that the district has ever had one. So, this is, I, I think, this, this policy, in addition to governing the reserve funds, can also be used to insist that there be a long-range plan for the district. So, that is all to the good. Okay. So, the board will now consider Resolution Number 5908, a resolution to adopt an amendment of reserves fund policy eight-point-one-zero-point-zero-two-five-P. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Director Espazza-Brown moves. Director Brim Edward seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5908. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment?
No, the resident.
Is there any board discussion?
Yes. I'll be voting yes on this. And in the interim, when I first read the initial version, I think pointed out that a layperson could not understand much of the language in this. And I still, as a not-layperson, have trouble comprehending exactly what's in here. So, I will be voting yes tonight, and I have volunteered to help with a rewrite that, while including the technical definitions, also includes plain English so that not only school district accountants, but the average person can understand what exactly we have in mind here.
Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 5908. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5908 is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. During this last matter, Ms. Powell has pointed out that there was an error in the Chair's script, and we have an incorrect resolution number on the matter of the superintendent's contract extension. So, I'd like to ask to revote on Resolution 5915. 5914 is the healthy and safety schools plan, which is in the business agenda, which you will vote on later.
So, we're already done with that?
So, you have either approved it, you have approved it and you will vote on it later? But I-
We already approved it. We don't need to.
But I, I would like you to have a redo on that very important matter of the superintendent's contract extension, Resolution 5915.
So moved.
Okay. Director Bailey moves. Director Espazza-Brown seconds a resolution to, a, a motion to adopt Resolution 5915. Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay, Resolution 5915, to extend the superintendent's contract by an additional two years, just to clarify, is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you again, board. And have I told you how detail-oriented and attentive our staff is? Thank you to our board manager and general counsel. Thank you.
Indeed. And just in case anybody's, anybody's wondering, we have now done this twice. So, we really mean this. Okay. Next item is Step Three Appeal, Complaint Number 201903. So.
Okay. My name is Jura Hutchinson, and I'm here today to talk about the safety of students at all the PPS schools and specifically my own school, Wilson High School. I'm not sure if any of you have been in a school shooting. I can say I have, and it's one of the most terrifying things I ever faced in my entire life. On October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, I sat in a different high school in California. I was the freshman, this was about the last couple of months of school. I was in the last period and we were watching a movie, and my class was on the lower level, on the ground floor of the school. And we all had heard a loud, rapid succession of noise, and over the intercom, our principal had said that we are in a lockdown and laid out all the steps to follow as the sound of what I knew that to be gunfire continued. And in ninth grade, I was the only one small enough to fit in a cabinet. And so, I showed myself in the cabinet and I hid there. And I texted my mom because if you call, your phone rings and it gives you away to the school shooter. And of course, none of us knew to do, but the windows in the classroom could have been easily shot out and the gunman could have walked into our classroom and killed all of us. And of course, I texted my mom that I was afraid they'd come in and she told me to remain completely silent and that she was coming. And that afternoon, four teams were shot. We learned days later, after two of the four shooters were arrested, that it was a gang hit on a fifteen-year-old girl. And if I recall correctly, it never made national news, but it was such a huge impact on our community and just within our school. But I also wanna point out that it may have made the news either because the lives of children of color in a school like mine are never treated with the same value as the children from neighborhoods like southwest Portland, which brings to the events of today. Well, April first is when the false lockdown happened at Wilson High School. Students in Sandy Hook, Connecticut, Parkland, Florida, both communities, just like southwest Portland, experienced mass killings of innocent children, teachers, and still in some of their communities, PPS included, act as if it won't happen in our neighborhoods. And I think that is one of the most unreliable points of views we can actually take because every neighborhood is susceptible to mass shootings, to school shootings. And it is a fault if we do not look at them and say that there are things that can be done to keep our students safe. And that should be the board's, you know, top priority, to keep their students in the schools, from freshman, middle school, elementary, all safe because our safety matters. And we can't learn properly if we fear for our lives in the schools. And to be honest, when I was back in San Francisco in my school, I felt safer there than I feel here in Wilson, even with the false lockdown, because there are not procedures put in place correctly to protect the students. And of course, my mother and my brother will talk a little bit on this later, but there needs to be for a follow-through. I have gone through the complaint process, I've written my complaints, I've gotten very nice responses back. I've been told that, you know, things will be happening, but there's been, I've been given no timeline, I've been given no dates of when these things will be happening, when they will be put into place, and there's no accountability. So, who do I need to go to? And when a culture of secrecy and a communication of debriefing or mental health services are actually available for students to go and talk, for us to say what will happen, for our safety to be put in mind, I don't need, you know, platitudes of, oh, we'll get on this right away. I need action and I need it now.
I'm Lynn Lynn Hutchinson. Here is the chain of events that happened during third period, April first, at Wilson. I was in my gym, I was in gym for PE. The gym doors are locked from the outside, but there was a loud knock on the door and two girls ran in telling us that we were in lockdown. We had no idea we were in, in a lockdown because the gym does not have an intercom. We have been through pre-planned drills, which clearly in hindsight were ridiculous failures. If it had been a true lockdown and the shooters were the ones knocking on the door, we would have all been in danger. In the drill, the, in the drills, the teachers and the entire school knew ahead of time and when the drill would happen. So, apparently, there was not an effort to create a true plan, plan to communicate throughout the school. This became obvious because if students are in the gym, they don't know they are in lockdown and will be in danger. The teachers directed us to the, the teacher directed us to the back of the gym that faces the outside wall of the, and door. My, my teacher said the lock, the locker room doors are not secure enough and someone could barge in. So, we were not going, going to hide in the locker room. She did not know what was going on in the school. She told us that we would run out the building if someone came in the other doors. Thankfully, the girls that had came, came to the doors minutes before were not shooters. During the lockdown, kids were talking and laughing while a girl from the special needs class was crying and kids were consoling her. I was terrified. The minute, the minute the administration knew it was an accidental alarm, the same information sent to parents should have gone to staff and students. I felt a, a fight-or-flight instinct and I was on a, on a, on high alert. My mom said the adrenaline in my body was making me feel this way. I was so annoyed that kids were laughing and talking and some kids stood up as if, as if nothing was hap, really happening. The arrogance was annoying. After fifteen minutes of tear and no information, the security guard came in with a key and told us to go to our next class. We were, we still had no idea what was going on and we were being told to go to the next class. Thankfully, my mom texted me an email from this acting principal telling parents that students will be notified and I learned, and I learned, and I learned about this false alarm. How is it that an email to my mom texted back to me was the only real information the class received? I am now convinced that we have no real system, no real security, no cameras, no buzzers and no intercom systems because, living in a place of privilege, people in a bubble thinking it won't happen here, but that's exactly what happened in Parkland and Park Rose last month. A false, sorry. A false sense of security makes it even more dangerous. Everyone feels comfortable saying, we don't have the money for these systems, but aren't our lives worth it? I am mandated, mandated to sit in school nine months, eight hours a day, and accountability is needed. When and how will these be addressed? We want timeline. And who do we need to go to if it doesn't happen?
So, as a parent of these two amazing advocates, it's very hard for me, I'm gonna get emotional, it's very hard for me to sit here and listen to, to my children, who really frankly, for an entire year at a brand-new school in Portland, we moved from out of state in July, have had lots and lots of issues of safety and security, lots of issues of inequity. They are people of color. There have been lots and lots of issues at Wilson High School. I'm, because I'm gonna get emotional, I'm gonna read my statement as well. I'm saddened, actually, that we have to be here in front of all of you. I, I had really wanted a meeting with Principal Guerrero and was told that that was not possible. And we just have had many, many steps where people, again, have given answers that were very well-meaning, but not, as both of my children have said, had a backing of accountability. The issue that we continue to struggle with are that the administration's statements, which are, which may, may be accurate at this point, but, but in reading articles since two thousand and eighteen, when we moved here, an article in the Portland Tribune about the bond money and then finding out that it wasn't going to be used yet. And then talking with Brian Martinick in September after the Communications Department sent out a notice from PPS listing all of the items that were going to be in schools and going, and I personally went and talked to the business manager and the acting principal at that time, who said they had never heard anything of that and that it was a funding issue and that there wasn't going to be money for that. And then having Brian Martinick tell me that that was not accurate and that by the end of October, there would be systems in place and that they were collecting bids. And then to have another article in a newspaper in December saying that this was going to happen and then another article, and, and it, they're, they're just, as my children have pointed out, there's, the, the timeline for bond funding of two thousand and seventeen and child safety really needs, the rubber needs to hit the road now. and seventeen and child safety really needs, the rubber needs to hit the road now. With regards to what happened at Wilson, um, so, uh, I, I, I know that the staff that wrote these emails were well-meaning, I, I know, I, I'm going to list that Molly Emmons wrote our, the, the first appeal, and she was very specific in that there is going to be talking to, uh, of staff at Wilson, and there's going to be, um, certain things that are, like, uh, alarms, uh, are going to happen, and locked doors are going to happen. But, again, there's no timeline for any of those things, there's not any specificity or any real accountability, when is, when is this going to happen? Clara Hertz wrote the, oh, sorry, am I? Okay, Clara, Clara Hertz had written our, um, our second appeal, and, and again, with great specificity, but disregarded that my daughter had a substitute teacher who did not know what to do, my daughter had to tell her class what to do in a lockdown. And, and yet, my daughter and I and my son received an email saying that substitute teachers have a card, and they have a folder, and they have training. But, but, but disregarding people's actual reality of what happened that day is really problematic. Telling my son that anyone who's in a part of the building that doesn't have an intercom has a walkie-talkie, when in fact, they do not. And that, that, that PE teacher did not have a walkie-talkie, that PE teacher did not receive a text, that PE teacher did not receive an email until well after I received an email. And so, I, I know that the people sending us emails were very well-meaning in what, what they were saying, but it just seems like there's a very lax nature about the reality of having to live through this situation, and not having specifics that are going to follow that. There's just a few other things I wanted to say, um, so since, since the April first lockdown, it was very hard, because this whole appeal process was very long, but there have been, um, multiple lockouts, which are different than lockdowns, but most teachers in Wilson do not know the difference. And I understand that you are going to say they are trained, but my children have now been through multiple lockouts at Wilson since April first, where teachers confused lockdown and lockout. And again, my children had to tell them, "No, this is a lockout, not a lockdown." It was painfully clear to my children that some of the staff didn't know that, the difference. Overall, there is a climate of secrecy, a lack of transparency and communication at Wilson, students and parents do not receive information. Wilson, I, I understand that we also have a new principal, I'm really hopeful that that will change, but the administration at Wilson is not just the principal. And the people that are still there really need to, to receive additional direction. Wilson has continued to have incidents, they've had incidents with knives, they've had threats of guns, there have been incidents with guns, there's been hate speech and hate symbols and antisemitism, and theft and, and car break-ins, my son's desk had a, a swastika on it in the fall, and I am still alarmed and shocked that no communication has gone home with any of these incidents to any parent. The reason I know these incidents, because I have children who are advocates. I tell other parents, and their kids are like, "Oh yeah, that happened," but they don't tell their parents, and neither does the school. There's no FTE allocated for this important work, and the only school social worker at Wilson was unassigned this year. It is my hope that the new leadership will change, but sadly, the recent real-world events of the gun at Park Rose, I truly believe that looking at what happens at Wilson, they are not prepared, and that the children and the staff in that building are not safe. I did personally meet with the director at the Jewish Federation, because I could get no response from staff at PPS, or staff at, uh, the school, they referred me to the ADL. I personally met with, um, the education director of the ADL, which is based out of Seattle, they have, um, amazing programs that are in place in Tigert, just down the street, that's why I, I got to meet with them, because they were there about the equity work and about the educational work that they've done with the administration and the children. And I, I really want this for PPS, I moved to Portland, I live in Portland, I want my children who are now going in to be a senior and, um, a sophomore, and I have another child going to be a sophomore, um, to, to feel safe in, in their buildings. Uh, we would, so with the bottom line is, as they've, they've already mentioned, we would like a list of measures and their completion dates to be shared with the entire Wilson community, we would like them to be shared with parents and staff and students, we would like to know when and how, parents will be involved in budget reviews, there's been a, it, all of this, lack of safety and security, things have been cut from the budget, and we don't even have safety and security as it is. I know that there's a daily shooting, um, or gun incident in schools a, a, all the time, I, I do know that, as my daughter mentioned, that hers was not, did not make national news. But, it's important, and, and I, I just, I really implore you to, to not only say that you're going to take this seriously, but really make sure, as they have so articulately put it, that there is accountability, that if, if you tell me you're hiring an electrician, which I got in either Molly or Clara's emails, that that, that I then know that that phone system, which is the only intercom to those classrooms, the classrooms that have intercoms, my daughters went to her next classroom, that teacher didn't have an intercom that worked on their phone. So, even though she was in a classroom that had a working phone with a substitute that didn't know what to do, she went to a, the next classroom, and they said they didn't know because their intercom didn't work. So, whether you hire an electrician, if there's not going to be accountability where someone goes from phone to phone and checks, and then someone is really responsible for making sure that on a regular basis this happens, that no matter how many times you tell me that you have things, there needs to be, uh, an evaluation, there needs to be something that is quali, qua, quantifiable, uh, uh, an evaluation of, these are the steps that are going to happen, so that they can go to school and feel safe, and I can know that, that they are safe. Thank you for letting me ramble there for a minute.
Thank you for, thank you for bringing this forward, and I'm, I'm sorry that you had the experience, and, and that you, I'm sorry that you had your experience in California, and I'm sorry that you were re-triggered here. So, I'm going to, I'm going to turn to Superintendent Guerrero, and, um, I think we have staff prepared to provide some information in response.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that every one of our students is entitled to a safe learning environment, uh, thank you for, for sharing your recent experience, uh, it's unfortunate, we're sorry about that, clearly, we need to take a close look at our, our procedures and our protocols, so that they're consistent, whether they exist or they need to be refreshed, there needs to be common knowledge about it. Uh, this is an area that we've recognized, um, that we need to do a better job at, thankfully, we have, uh, resources set aside from the two thousand seventeen bond, and so, uh, I'm going to invite our deputy superintendent to, to highlight a few features of some of the work that will certainly, uh, be a part of our campuses, uh, that are directly related to student safety and security. For example, we know that video cameras and intercoms, and a lot of that work is commencing this summer, and will continue throughout the course of the school year, for example, so that, um, some of the blind spots and the intercom gaps can be addressed, but, uh, so there are timelines there on some of those projects, I'm, I'm a little less familiar with some of the details, but, uh, if I could invite Deputy Superintendent Hertz, and certainly our chief operating officer is, is present here as well, to, to give you more concrete responses to, to some of the concerns you've raised, which we recognize exist in, in many campuses around the district, and buildings that haven't had the benefit of some safety and modernization work.
I would like to begin with thanking the Hutchinson family for bringing this, um, issue forward, and it actually, um, made us go through the whole system and really check to verify everything that we said we have in place is functioning and, um, and working well. And I would say that by doing that, we have improved our practice, and I'll share some of that with you. So, I have also offered to meet with the family, and I still extend that offer, if, if that would be, um, something you'd like to do, I'd be more than willing, happy and willing to share additional information and consider your concerns. So, the bids and contracts are in place for Wilson High School, our first, um, we've had two out of the three bids go out, and we've awarded two, and we're, um, in the process, we're evaluating the third, with a goal of all schools by next spring, being our security projects will be completed. Wilson High School is in the first round, so the work is beginning this summer and will finish this fall. The, um...
Could you, uh...
Yes.
Very quickly summarize those three contracts and...
In terms of...
Outcomes.
So, what, what they're...
Cameras, locks.
So, let me give you, um, an example of Wilson, and that will give you an idea, okay? Specifically, at Wilson, the preliminary design shows them receiving electronic door locks and video intercoms at the main entrance in front of the school, as well as the ADA entrance in the rear of the school. Additionally, we are adding card swipe readers at several exterior entrances, speakers are be, being added in hallways, the gymnasium, locker rooms, auditorium, music choir rooms, and at several exterior areas. These speakers are tied into the school's voice-over IP system, and messaging heard through these speakers will be the same heard on classroom phones. The other thing is, we did a full audit of all the Wilson High School, um, telephones, and the repairs have been, um, completed. And, yes, we have, um, hi, actually hired the electrician now, and he's, uh, in place, and as we're installing all the new equipment, the electrician's being trained on how to, um, you know, service and maintain the equipment, and, um, learning right as they're installing. I have spoken with the new principal at Wilson High School, and he's also offered to meet with, um, the Hutchinson family as, as well, and to address any concerns they have about Wilson High School. We, um, the, so in terms of the PA system, um, the questions about that, the two thousand seventeen bond program will pay for adding speakers to all areas where emergency announcements cannot be heard, so any, um, area in a school that currently doesn't have announcements will have that. And that is, again, coming through in three sets of projects to cover all of our schools, and will be completed by next spring. So, in terms of their questions about communication, um, and ensuring that Wilson staff have a better understanding of lockdown guidelines, and who decides, um, who's receiving the emergency lockdown messages. So, as part of, um, the improvement plan of the lessons learned from the accidental lockdown, our emergency management department has drafted and sent out communication guidelines to all schools. These guidelines instruct schools on the communication protocol in the event of an accidental activation of the emergency messaging system, as well as the communication during an actual emergency event. So, we are also updating our school messenger system as a resource to communicate with students in the coming year. The misunderstanding about the district's protocol came from a substitute teacher, substitutes are trained in these processes before they're permitted to work as substitute teachers, they also carry the directions on how to respond to these emergency situations on the back of their electronic key card. Every substitute receives a folder containing emergency information as they, and, um, begin their job for the day. Wilson High School staff are well-versed in lockdown guidelines, they trained it last August at the beginning of the year with our school resource officer, and have done both of the required drills in addition to this incident. One of the reasons the school didn't make a announcement over the voice-over IP is because the training around release and communications, communication states the only way to ensure the person sending the email or making the announcement wasn't under duress, was to go through the school and unlock doors with keys to let students and staff know the lockout was in error. So, it did take some time, but it was following protocol to make sure that people had direct communication. We errred on the side of caution, reducing further issues by sticking to protocol. The updated guidelines were immediately shared with the office staff, and were shared with all staff in an all-staff meeting on May fourteenth. Staff also had the opportunity to debrief the, the lockout, teachers were informed in person when someone keyed into their room to announce the end of the incident. The principal emailed parents wouldn't, once it had been established that the lockdown was an accident, and staff had been deployed to clear the classrooms. The principal did not, did send an email out to staff, excuse me, the principal did send an email out to staff after the incident was completely concluded and debriefed, when the team who cleared the building, with the team who cleared the building. Emergency management staff is available to conduct additional training with the Wilson staff as needed, and the, um, school has trained instructional leaders who then trained their departments on how to activate the emergency system. So, it's been, um, well-thought-out at, at Wilson High School. I will also share with you, our chief human resource officer, um, is conducting a substitute training and, in, um, this fall, and that they will have, uh, academy, and this will be required training for all substitutes before they can work in the district for the coming year. So, and there was question about, um, knowing that a national security team has seen and approved our plan that we, um, have for, um, the bond program. And we work closely, first with our law enforcement partners, in the city and county bureaus of emergency management. And in August two thousand eighteen, the district had a, a security reviewed, completed by New Dawn Security, to help its plan, our security capital program. Um, we have hired a former Portland Police Bureau captain to review our security pro, protocols. Security staff have undergone training from the FEMA, as well as school safety training through the, um, US Department of Education. The security projects to be completed in all schools by, um, spring twenty twenty include video intercoms installed on the main entryways, system override buttons to provide automatic lockout control in an emergency, um, voice-over IP, um, system updates to add visual monitoring, adding video monitors and support computers for front-desk areas of schools with cameras, adding public address systems, speakers in hallways, gyms, and external areas of schools that do not already have them, new signage to direct school visitors to main entry and require them to check in at the main office. There's additional questions about the cameras, but I believe this here is a repeat, but we are spending a total of nine million dollars, um, on security from the two thousand seventeen bond. And staff intends to request for additional security resources in the twenty twenty bond, for, and addition, and additional security cameras that are throughout our schools. Speakers are included in the current bond, and, um, again, will be, um, installed everywhere needed for emergency messages to be heard, heard in the school. So, there was a question about, for fifteen minutes during third period, I did not know that this was a false alarm, I was in the gym for PE, the gym doors are locked from the outside, but there was a loud knock on the door, and two girls ran in telling us we were in lockdown. The gym does not have an intercom. So, I said staff supervising students in an area in which the voice-over IP cannot be heard, like, such as the gym or cafeteria, have a walkie-talkie, or a staff runner will notify them of an emergency in a timely way. In an actual lockdown, it is not safe to send someone to the space, school staff are texted when radios need to be silenced, when hiding from an intruder. So, again, having the, this is what was in place last year, but with the new, um, systems we're putting in next year, that, that piece won't be necessary. I think I've probably answered enough, um, of the questions, there's, I, we had, um, lots of communication back and forth, but I still, what's important to me is that all students have a safe, um, school to attend and feel comfortable at school, and we want to make sure that we're, um, being responsive to your concerns. And again, we welcome you to, to meet with me and the principal, or, um, at the principal, uh, as alone, and whatever would be helpful to you as a family.
Do you have any, uh, board discussion?
So, here, here's the contradiction, and I think it's the contradiction that you all heard, is all substitutes are trained, and yet, in practice, we had a substitute who was not effective, and I'm not pointing fingers at them. I know as a state employee of the state of Washington, I go through these trainings every year, um, that doesn't make me proficient, and that's, you know, just because you graduate doesn't mean you can, uh, you have proficiency. So, that's a question I have going forward, is, does our training lead to a proficiency in action? And clearly, in this case, it didn't, and... And clearly, in this case, it didn't, and that's something to look at. Do we need to change our training to be more, so that we're, get that proficiency?
I think what would also help that substitute in the future is that they would have heard that the gym will now have an intercom where they'll be able to, the speakers from the ceilings, they'll be able to hear the announcements as well.
The substitute wasn't in the gym.
The substitute wasn't in the gym, and the gym teacher didn't have a walkie-talkie.
Okay.
Yeah, right. And that's the second contradiction, when you say this is our protocol, but this is what actually happened. I guess if I was a parent bringing the complaint, I'd be, are you telling me I'm crazy? So we have to have a better response than that. I understand what the protocol is, but if that's not happening, there's a breakdown, and we don't have an effective system. So that's the level we need to respond to, not that this is our protocol, if that makes sense.
Well, I would just add, that's along the same lines of just my only real comment on this, other than really being grateful for all of you bringing this forward, because it's going to help us improve our practices at all of our schools. But I think the response is really thorough in terms of being able to explain what is scheduled for Wilson and what changes we might be able to make in terms of protocols. But like you, Scott, I would like to see some sort of follow-up on, once the work is done, confirming that it was done, confirming that people were trained, confirming that we have the protocols in place, that everybody who's supposed to have a walkie-talkie has a walkie-talkie, just some kind of reality checks on the commitments. Because I think that it's, to me, very satisfying to see everything that is slated to occur or that should have already occurred, and a little more attention to it, but we just need to make sure that it actually, actually happens and is thoroughly implemented.
Can I finish? Can we change either lockdown or lockout? Because I know that's confusing. That's just by its very nature, the two words are so similar. Is there any way to come up with changing one of those words?
It's a national, it's a national standard, and so people have to be, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak, but I'm going to speak. A lockout is that all the doors are locked and business as usual happens in the school. And teachers have to understand that. Like, they have to be highly proficient at that. They need to understand when there was a lockout, my daughter was walking in the hall, a teacher came out in the hall and grabbed her and pulled her into the yoga room, saying that they were in a lockdown. And she said, "No, we're not, we're in a lockout." And so those two words are national standard words, and teachers need to be trained to understand what the difference is.
Thank you, yes, yeah, right, I under, and that's another...
And they're on our, so we carry them with us, so that we can refer and remember what they are.
And, right, and so...
Some of us do.
Well, do I, I understand, some of you do, but that's, to her point, I don't know her name, I'm sorry.
Matt, can you speak on the line? Because there's people in line.
Oh, sorry. I, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say to the points that are being made with regards to the accountability piece, I understand that people are supposed to carry cards. I understand that they're supposed to be trained. I understand that they're supposed to know what the difference is. What I'm telling you is that they don't. And the fact that they don't is the problem to Scott's point and to Amy's point, is that we really need to make sure. They, I don't know what the system is to make sure, but, you know, it's alarming when a child who's already been in a shooting is being pulled out of a hall into a classroom and being told that they're in lockdown, when she just came from another room and knew that it was a lockout, and therefore she was free to be in the hallway. Now she doesn't know if she missed a message that we're now in lockdown, because the teacher who pulled her in did not know the difference between those two words and those practices. And that's, that is the issue.
There are also posters in classrooms, but we'll make sure that there are new posters coming out this fall to be refreshed throughout our schools.
So does, so one of my questions that I want to thank you again, and both of you, for so eloquently bringing this situation forward and your concerns, it does, so I don't know, you know, when they get training, initial new teacher and new substitute training, but like, you know, we've had a lot of video kinds of trainings. Are there videos to reinforce this? So you get an initial training, you know, maybe an annual review of what the processes are. Would that be something that might be helpful? Because, you know, people are maybe given a lot of written information that may be easier to comprehend, written and a video that goes along with it. So I'm sure just kind of looking up or looking at the depth of our training and ways to kind of reinforce that annually.
Or a test, you know, those assessments that the kids have to take?
Perhaps, yeah.
Perhaps an assessment that has the critical things, and if you don't pass the assessment and it's not in your file, that you are able to understand those things, then you might need some additional training. I don't, I mean, I'm not here to give all the answers, but I know that my children are assessed all the time and don't get to be highly proficient if they are not assessing at that level. And so I would like there to be high proficiency in, if there is an incident, I would like, I would like to know that that person is trained, whether there's a brochure on the wall, or there's a card that somebody carries, they're not proficient. And I'm sorry that they're not, but they're not.
So I don't want to sound glib here at all, but if you're, if you were here for the comments that we made about what's been happening over the last two years in terms of having to build structures...
Yes, yes, I was here.
And processes and protocols, we still have work to do, and I think this is one of the areas where we need to work on. I mean, I, I don't, Lord knows, I am not an expert in security. But I also know that we, we are not up to speed as a district, or individuals within the district, on what would be required in the event of a seismic event. I mean, there are lots of, there are lots of safety-related, safety-related practices that we need to really nail down and really train people on. And I, I mean, I'm just going to echo what everybody said. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's, I'm, I'm sorry that you had to, I'm sorry that this happened, I'm sorry that it, it brought up past experiences that were traumatic. And we're going to use this as an opportunity to do better. And I think we've identified a fair number of actions that we can take and are taking on a, I think on an accelerated timeline. And, and we need to do better, and we will be asking for, we'll be getting updates on the progress toward achieving the things that the district has committed to.
Chair.
Yes.
So, thank you again for bringing this concern forward. One thing we learned in Boy Scouts is be prepared, and having a procedure or a protocol is something you have to practice and drill all the time, and you learn from doing that. So you heard us highlight a few things that are part of our district-wide action planning in this area of safety and security, and thankful that, you know, Wilson's in that first round. But all of our buildings need, you know, to be similarly, have their safety issues addressed, and because the good citizens of Portland have made an investment in our public schools in this area, I'd like to ask Deputy Superintendent Hertz and RCO Dan Young to, when the work is completed and ready for final test at Wilson High, just as an example of the work that will be happening across all of our schools, please invite me to that final test, as well as any interested board members and the Hutchinson family to join us for that. And I know that I will trust our Assistant Superintendent, Joe LaFontaine, raise your hand for high schools. I know that he will be working with new principal at Wilson High School on a number of areas. And even though there's been some prior training, staff turns over, and so it will be important for them to familiarize themselves with the safety improvements and how they need to incorporate those into their security steps as well. So I know that he will make sure that that's part of our educators' training as they come back from the summer as well. And we'll continue to give thought about whether it's substitute teachers or any other adult being familiar, you know, with procedures and what we mean by certain protocols. It needs to be automatic, and in the moment is not, is not the time to figure it out. So thank you, thank you to our two students for bringing this forth. It's definitely alerted us to a lot of work that is slated to take place in this area, but it's a good example, and will highlight for me what we need to do across the district. So I look forward to the improvements happening over the coming months at Wilson High School. And what I want you to do is to go back to school in the fall and be reassured that those issues have been addressed.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for your advocacy as well. There's been a lot of discussion about training, which I think will make an important difference, but I want to focus just for a moment on perhaps the board's role on the infrastructure side of things. In 2017, when we had the bond stakeholder advisory group, there actually was a fairly long discussion about the, how much money in the bond, the 790, ultimately it was a 790 million bond, would be put into health and safety and accessibility. So that was everything from lead in the water, lead in paint, safety and security issues, seismic upgrades, ADA improvements. And it was, a discussion was 150 million too much. It clearly was what the voters were focused on when they approved that, because we were coming off of the lead in the water crisis. And there was a $220 million package for health and safety and accessibility, and then there was 150. And during that discussion, there was, from my perspective, I was interested in dialing up the 150 million dollar number. There was a lot of pressure to get the three high schools and middle school, and then how much you could, how much you could then put into health, safety, and accessibility, and then also how much you actually could contract during the four years. But at the time, we just, the decision was only, was made to put only $5 million into security system upgrades. And one of the issues I raised, of course, the most recent tragedy at that time had been a Sandy Hook. Of course, we hadn't had Parkland at the time either. The decision was made to go for a smaller number so that we could rebuild the three high schools and also Kellogg Middle School. I think when we get to our planning of our next bond, there really should be some deep thinking about how we make the split between the modernization, the full school modernizations, which then you get the full school modernization, so they get the seismic and, I mean, they get the, if you're in the school that's been modernized, you have the security, the seismic protection, everything. But the reality is, if this is a 30-year bond program, we're going to have students in schools that potentially aren't very safe if we continue to put the vast majority of the funds primarily into modernizations. So while the staff is really their, sort of their responsibility to improve and make sure the training and communications protocols are in place, when the board is working with OSM on the next bond package, we'll have an opportunity to make some decisions on investments that can touch every school and, you know, think about whether we want to be waiting for 10 to 20 years to make some of those upgrades, or whether we actually want to make a bigger batch of those now. So I think this is a good reminder that we have students in unmodernized buildings, and we're going to have them in those buildings for quite some time, and that we'll have an opportunity to have, I think, a full discussion. So thank you for raising it, because it's easy to get attached to those new buildings and everything they have, and not be focused on that we still have these old buildings that need improvements.
And I, go ahead.
So there's a tension there, because the more we put into current, in some cases, Band-Aids, we push off the modernization, and we know the earthquake is a huge risk going forward. And so while we might make our schools safer in some ways, we put that issue off, and it's, we wrestled with that in 2012, 2017, and there's, it's, it's a real issue, how you balance that.
And I guess I would say two things before we close this out. One, as we prepare for the 2020 bond, I am, I am hopeful that we're going to have a bond development process that allows for a great deal of community input in the decision-making, where the community can weigh in on these points of tension, where, I mean, we do only have X amount of money, and we need to make really wrenching decisions about how we spend it. And I think when we, when we create the process to develop the package of projects that will be covered under the 2020 bond, that this is going to be one of the things that we need to wrestle with. And the second thing I will say is, it would be helpful if both the state and the federal government would take safety issues seriously, and in more than just hopes and prayers, but would actually throw some cash at this issue, so that school districts who have been underfunded for 30 years would be able to address these things in more than just Band-Aids. And in order to do that, the legislature would have to actually be in session. So that's all I'll say there. But thank you again for bringing this forward.
Finally, can we get phone codes that aren't, cannot be confused with checking messages?
Okay, I'm sure that's going to be on the list. Okay, so the board will now consider Resolution Number 5917, a resolution to uphold the superintendent's decision on a Step Three Appeal Complaint Number 201903. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I'll second. Director Rosen moves, Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5917. Is there any public comment? Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 5917. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Can we, can we have a little bit of discussion first?
Okay, or discussion? Go ahead.
And we've run into this before with the complaint process, where we certainly recognize validity of statements made. And can we, can we close out a complaint process by agreeing to plow ahead and address your concerns outside of that quasi-legalistic process? We've done that before.
Or somehow outline the process for follow-up and execution?
Yeah.
My understanding is, I thought that's what we just did.
Okay.
And so maybe, maybe you're looking at formalizing it in some, in some way. I thought what I heard from the superintendent and Deputy Superintendent Hertz was a commitment on communications and on training. And we've got our piece to do on the actual facilities piece. And we've got our piece to do on the actual facilities piece.
And I think in addition to that, what we heard was a commitment to keep the Hutchinson family in the loop.
Yep.
And with regular, regular updates on progress made, particularly in Wilson. But I imagine you have concerns about the rest of the district as well. So I think...
So certainly this is the prerogative of the Hutchinson family and the board can only suggest we can keep it open until we come back in the fall and report out on all the action steps that we highlighted this evening so that you can be assured that there was accountability and taking care of those issues that were raised by the Hutchinson students.
And I haven't had a chance to say yet, but thank you very much for bringing this up. Your experiences are entirely consistent with my own children's experiences. And it's a very important topic to me. And I also want to point out that, yes, clearly there are problems with implementation that are not at all consistent with procedure. But also the procedures, in many cases, are not terribly good and are themselves inconsistent. And I would point out what you mentioned. These two sentences, which together are just really something else. Staff supervising students in areas in which the VOIP cannot be heard, i.e. in the gym cafeteria, outside, et cetera, have a walkie-talkie or a staff runner will notify them of an emergency in a timely way. In an actual lockdown, it is not safe to send someone to the space. So you've got a system that only works in a drill. I don't think this is a good system. Thank you.
Okay, so I think I'm going to need some direction here. So I think what we have just discussed is suspending resolution of this complaint?
Yes, I think you can make a motion to table to appoint in the future or with specificity or with some general direction. I think that's the motion you need to put on the table.
And it would, it would require waiving the time limitations that are established in policy, correct?
Yes, but the family has agreed to that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in Division 22, but I think with the family's consent, I think that that is taken care of.
It's like what we did as a Quakers mascot.
Right, right. Okay, so...
Motion to table.
Sec.
Do we need to, are we amending what we already first and seconded?
I think we're just tabling it, right?
Yeah, there was a pending motion to approve the resolution.
Right.
So why don't you finish that out and vote it down and then have a new motion? Or you can withdraw that motion, but you're halfway there.
I think we withdraw the prior motion on this complaint?
Second.
Okay, so can we vote on just...
Vote on withdrawing.
Withdrawing, okay. So all in favor of withdrawing the Resolution 5917? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Okay, by a vote of seven to zero, we have voted to withdraw Resolution 5917.
Right, which was pending. So now I'd like you to have a motion to table how you want to define its return before the board.
Okay. Okay, do we want to, I think that the outstanding question is, do we want to put a time limit on this or not?
So the project will be completed later this fall, but I need to look to...
It said, it said November sometime.
Yeah, I just want to confirm with the latest, because when we first responded to this, we were not as far along in the bidding and contracting. I just want to confirm timeline.
I apologize, is the question when the Wilson project will be completed?
Yeah, it's scheduled for late fall, so towards the end of this year. It is a part of the first package that is under contract right now.
So we can certainly do a check-in with the family with an update in as, after school opens with what we've gotten in place for the start of school. And then we can do, we could do a second one after the construction work is completed.
So the first one on procedures and the second one on physical installation?
Okay, so... Are you willing to accept a common understanding that you will be kept up to date on progress? And we'll bring this back, this complaint back for resolution? Can we say December 1st, December 15th? You tell me what's...
I, I think we're comfortable coming back in December. And if there's some change and it's maybe a little bit after that, we can communicate that then. But I think that's a fine deadline for us to come back.
Okay, let's say December 1st?
Sure, yes.
Okay. We can always come back earlier, but I, okay. So, so can somebody craft some language for actual resolution?
Yes, I'm working on this, making sure I get the language just right. And forgive me for not having been through the tabling process. I want to make sure we don't inadvertently kill what we're trying to postpone.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is take the intent of the board and come back, let you move on to the next agenda item and come back to that motion in a few minutes, if that's all right?
Is that okay? Okay. All right, so we're going to hold this in abeyance and then we're going to move on to the next thing, which is the adoption of the district's vision. In the fall of 2018, the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Portland Public Schools commissioned a community-wide process to tap into the wisdom of our students, our educators and our broader community to help us reimagine PPS for a rapidly changing world. The community-wide process engaged thousands of diverse stakeholders, including students, families, educators, district staff, and civic business community and philanthropic leaders, who produced nearly 16,000 data points, which became the basis for the various elements of the vision. This eight-month journey included a broad range of activities, including a student summit, three guiding coalition sessions, almost 40 citywide and targeted community engagement sessions, two community-wide surveys, learning journeys and work sessions with the Board of Education. This vision is our community's vivid picture of the world we want to create, one that allows us to imagine and think differently about our path to a better school system for every child. As the executive sponsors of the vision process, we, the board members, are deeply grateful to the people of Portland who continue to demonstrate their belief in the importance of public education, their support for PPS and their dedication to this process and the community-based vision that will guide our work to best serve every student in every school every day. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair Moore. I'm very excited and pleased to share with the broader community this co-constructed vision, Portland Public Schools Reimagined. Over the, over the past school year, we've been in conversation with students, families, principals, teachers, nonprofit leaders and community stakeholders to get our collective best thinking on what the future of PPS should be, to ensure that all of our students walk across the stage on graduation day, possessing characteristics valued by the people of Portland. Here at the desk tonight is our Chief Engagement Officer, Jonathan Garcia. Joining us will be folks who are familiar to us from this process as partners from Prospect Studios, Fiona Hovenden, Sonia Lopes and Jenny Kwong, who are going to be providing a brief overview of what we'll be sharing with you tonight. In every public school system in America, it's critical, it's vital, that the broader community be really clear in defining what it believes to be a whole and complete education, what it desires to have as traits in its graduates. This articulated vision for a reimagined school system, developed by the broader Portland community, is one that focuses on developing our children and youth to be compassionate, critical thinkers, able to collaborate and solve complex problems, graduates who are prepared to lead a more socially just world. As we know, a vision is a bold leap into the future. It paints a vivid picture of the world we want to create. It identifies a destination, our North Star per se, that inspires collective action. It guides strategies and drives sustained growth. A vision helps us step outside the present and imagine what is possible. It liberates our imaginations to think differently about our path forward. This vision, our vision, focuses on what we want to be true for our graduates. Because as we know, PPS exists in a rapidly changing and complex world. You don't have to look far beyond the fact that the future of work and learning is evolving swiftly. Jobs and careers that exist now that didn't exist five years ago and that trend is likely to continue. And we want our students to be adaptable. We want them to be able to thrive when they graduate. We want our graduates to discover their passions, be proactive about learning and life paths and adapt to change while maintaining their hopes, plans and values. In meeting the future by anticipating change, developing adaptability and resilience and addressing injustices, this vision aims to create an educational system that will prepare our graduates for their best possible futures. While I'm particularly excited, what I'm particularly excited on is that this captures and is informed by the historical context in Portland and its future aspirations that we know will take a collective effort. We hope that this vision, Portland Reimagined, as a call to action for our broader community with our school system playing a critical role in preparing our future Portlanders to both thrive in and improve the world.
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. So as you shared, this vision was a collective effort by so many people. As a reminder, this shared vision was co-developed by our Guiding Coalition, a group of approximately 90 people from across Portland representing diverse communities and viewpoints. We had high school students representing schools across our school system. We had new educators and veteran educators, those who teach in our special ed classrooms in preschool and our students, and our students who are about to graduate. Teachers who teach STEM, music, Spanish. We had a school administrators who support students in magic buildings in our K5s, our middle schools, our comprehensive high schools and our alternative programs. We also had our labor partners, our business leaders, our nonprofit providers, our elected officials and colleagues in higher education. Our Guiding Coalition represented the true diversity of our community, both by language, socioeconomic status, geographical location, race and gender. We are proud and thankful for all of you who have spent, who spent weekends helping shape the vision for PPS. We also hosted over 35 citywide and targeted community meetings and online surveys. These were large gatherings and focus meetings. Meetings with migrant parents, visiting black churches, Head Start parents, dyslexia advocates, special education families and the PTAs. We partnered with our labor partners to welcome educators to share their voice. And lastly, we met with a diverse group of students. Students in our community transition program, students who identify as part of the LGBTQ community, Latino, Black and students in leadership and an array of leadership programs. In total, we engaged thousands of stakeholders and produced nearly 16 data points, $16,000 data points, all which became the basis for the various elements of our vision. This journey here, this journey map here depicts the timeline and sequence of community engagement activities from fall 2018 leading up to a community exhibition at OMSI last month. These activities included a student summit, three guiding coalition sessions, many citywide and targeted community engagement sessions, two community-wide surveys, learning journeys and work sessions with the Board of Education. I want to thank our staff who helped to host these community meetings and want to acknowledge our PPS school communities for opening up their doors and welcoming our broader community to help shape this vision. Specifically, I want to thank Fabian, Lane, Jackson, Beverly Cleary, Madison, Pioneer, Seka Juwia, Benson, Lincoln, Harriet Tubman, Grant, Jefferson, Wilson, Roosevelt and the Riggler community for welcoming our community, our broader community with open arms during our community sessions. And so as a point of privilege, I'd like to introduce you all to Andrew. He's a graduate of Wilson High School. Andrew was one of our Guiding Coalition members who brought our diverse student perspectives to the shaping of this vision. I'm going to ask him to share a few thoughts about the process as a graduate and as a graduate of PPS, what this work means for him and the legacy he's going to leave behind.
So this was a really special process. I was, it was an honor to be a part of, to leverage my voice and my experience as a member of the PPS community since kindergarten through this process. I attended Capitol Hill and then Jackson and Wilson High School. And I've been happy with my experience through PPS. However, there have been still things that I wish that as, after I graduated this year, I had been more prepared for as I'm entering into college. So this experience allowed me to gather my thoughts together and think about my experience as a whole through the K through 12 journey and think about what I wish that my future neighbors, my future friends and family and my future children will have through the PPS, through their PPS experience. And so I had the opportunity to work together with members of the community to think about how graduates should look like in the future, how teachers should look like in the future and what type of things we need to do as a school system to make those things happen. This included traveling to Seattle, just visit schools on the cutting edge of these, of education to see what we can do to be more like that and to be more equity-focused, to be on the cutting edge of technology as well as being forward thinkers in the education community in general. I was really thrilled that students were involved in this process because I think oftentimes, even though students should be the center of the education process, their voice can be left out. And during this process, the student voice was elevated in every situation through student panels, student involvement in general. And then those whole process started with a student summit, which I, summit, which is a testament to what this process is for. It's for our graduates. And I'm, I'm very happy with everything that we came up with through this, with the graduate portrait, with the system changes and with the adult portrait. And I'm just really pleased that I was able to be a part of it.
So Andrew, Andrew's going to be a Beaver.
Yes.
This fall. And I know that you are between two majors. And do you want to talk about that?
Yes, so let me preface this with saying like, I never thought I wanted to be a teacher, ever. So I'm still deciding between engineering and teaching. But honestly, this whole process, the whole visioning process has made me have education beyond, like on my mind of actually majoring in. And I think through this process, I saw how empowering it is, especially for this community in general and how education can be used as a tool for minorities in our community and for elevating those that are less fortunate. And I think that this process kind of was an eye-opening to me, that the power of education.
Thank you. Before he heads out, any questions before I, comments?
As somebody in education, I highly encourage you to go into education. But I also want to thank you for all the time that you put into this. And it's been a really great process, so it's great to hear you tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All your work.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, just, just to add in, I think, sorry, just one last comment. Of all the time that we spent in the community, one of the most powerful sessions were, the most powerful sessions were when students were talking about what they, what they needed from the adults in the system and what they envisioned for their future. And I think one of the, the best qualities of this vision is that I think we've actually captured that. But we would have never been able to capture it if students hadn't actively participated. And I can imagine what my response would have been if I'd been asked as a student to like come to a bunch of meetings and talk to adults and sit around and sort of discuss the future 30 years from now. So I applaud you for your willingness to do that because I think our vision really reflects primarily the students who spoke up and participated in the process. So thanks.
Thank you.
Of course, I'm biased, Andrew. So whether you choose education or engineering, we're going to be working relentlessly at making the vision a reality. So there'll be a place for you to continue making your contribution here at PPS. We'll be waiting for you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
And Andrew is one of many, as you all have shared, many students. And so this is, this captures some of our students that were part of our Guiding Coalition. So I'm going to turn it over to our team at Prospect Studio to lead the rest of the conversation.
Thank you, Jonathan. So I know you have the report in front of you, but I'm going to take a few minutes to summarize... to summarize, starting with the graduate portrait, what it is, what your community has identified as the most critical elements of the graduate portrait, and to articulate just a couple of implications for the work. So we think of the graduate portrait as the heart of the community's educational vision. Your graduate portrait is your promise to your students and families that the adults' actions and systems transformation work will be driven by decisions that helps every student work towards a graduate portrait. Your graduate portrait is a very ambitious description of your community's desires and what it wants for its students, what it wants its students to know, to be, and to be able to do in order to thrive in their lives and in their careers. And your graduate portrait reflects what your community values as the most critical knowledge, skills, and dispositions for success. So first and foremost, although I'm not going in specific order, I will tend to start sort of from the bottom and move up. So first and foremost is to graduate students who are skilled creative problem solvers, who can collaborate with others, understand problems from multiple perspectives, and develop solutions that truly meet the needs of people. Your graduate portrait will also graduate, I mean, your graduate students who demonstrate mastery of core academic knowledge and skills, as well as a deep appreciation for and experience with the arts and practical knowledge of self-care. As critical thinkers, they can analyze information from multiple perspectives and can effectively use current and future technology to support problem solving. As racial equity leaders, students actively take part in making our society more just by developing their own knowledge, agency, and advocacy skills to challenge injustice. One thing we know about the future is that it's always evolving and changing. Students are prepared to navigate and adapt to life's challenges knowing they can use their assets, their networks, and mindset of continuous learning to keep moving towards growth and fulfillment. As powerful communicators, they are clear, logical, persuasive, and compelling through various modes of written, verbal, and digital communication. And they are also effective listeners, which results in more empathetic and authentic communication content. These knowledge and skills are nestled in graduates, who are nested in graduates who feel positive and confident about their personal and cultural identities. They operate from a strength-based perspective, demonstrating empathy, curiosity, respect, interest in the points of views of others. And finally, graduates are prepared to live and work in a global society, understanding their responsibilities to the environment, seeing themselves as a connected, in a connected local, national, and global system, and feeling optimistic about their future through inspirational, real-world experiences. This heart of your vision, your graduate portrait, will rely on adults to transform systems to enable this future. To be true to the graduate portrait, uh, promise, there are design implications and challenges. Your commitment to the same graduate portrait for every student implies different designs, actively involving those with different lived experiences and perspectives in the design process to meet the needs of different needs, to meet the needs of different students. Second, it is the need to develop a graduate portrait continuum that breaks down the ultimate desired outcomes into developmental phases that can answer questions such as, what would a racial equity leader in development look like in fourth grade? What does awareness of personal bias look like in a kindergartner? Guideposts for the learners, as well as adults who support them, will need to be developed to help you actualize your graduate portrait. So I'm going to turn it over to Jenny now to talk about the educator essentials.
Thank you, Sonia. As we heard from Sonia walking through the graduate portrait, it is a bold and aspirational vision for Portland Public School District's graduates. And in order to reach them, we know that this vision will include the support, what we end up calling the educator essentials, which are the knowledge, skills, dispositions that are fundamental for educators. So while this is not one-to-one, though there are parallels with the graduate portrait, they are complementary by every mean. And when we say educator essentials, we, in this context, we do use educator broadly. We're talking about all the adults in the system who supports our students. And even though some of the language you'll see in the document in front of you are specific to classroom teachers, the majority of the language underscores exactly that, that every adult's contribution in the system impacts students, be it directly or indirectly, and therefore it impacts student success and therefore is important for all adults in the system. There are nine educator essential elements, as you can see, and they have many overlapping themes. I'm pointing out several of them tonight, and I know you all will be reading more closely again. But some of these elements emphasize in educators, of course, their dedication to their practice, so being knowledgeable and committed to lifelong learning, as well as continuously improving their work through self-awareness and reflection. We know that educators are proactive problem solvers and will continue to be by being adaptive, resilient, and open to change, and that they anticipate impactful trends in education that will be relevant for their students, and therefore they are innovative, global, and pragmatic. And as we know, problem solving isn't done alone. And so educators are focused on building strong relationships, and they do this by being consistent and reliable, someone that can be counted on by their colleagues and allies, both internally and externally. And therefore, they must also be community-minded, connected, and collaborative with the other adults in the system. And of course, this collaboration is in service of every student and family as we think about a more equitable system. And so educators are caring, empathetic, and relational, with this empathy focused on being inclusive and responsive to diverse learners. And therefore, educators must be bold by being racial equity and social justice-centered, as they are critical actors, making this system a more equitable one, one that this vision underscores. So as we heard earlier from Sonia, the graduate portrait outlines what a graduate, a graduate of PPS should be prepared to do. They will be prepared and confident leaders of a more just future. And for this to come to fruition, we know that these fundamentals that we have on the screen is not just what educators should arrive with, but that the educators in this system will wrestle with and develop these, as well as model for and inspire them within students. Similar to the graduate portrait, there are implications, obviously, from these educator essentials. I think while there are some that come to mind, the core piece that the educator essential really highlights is that this is a collective and iterative nature, and this work has really just begun. And so what you see here is a high-level thinking that will guide PPS toward the direction of how they want, how you all want to invest in your people. But coming out of this, the work really does begin with further engagement, as we saw. So much engagement has happened, but even more specific engagement with teachers and educators and other adults, so that it becomes more and more clear what each element looks like in practice for people in a diversity of roles and backgrounds. And ultimately, you want to continue to look at this in order to track that you are on the right track towards supporting each and every Portland student in successfully achieving the graduate portrait by the time they graduate PPS. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fiona to talk about system shifts.
Thank you. So if the, if the nine elements of the graduate portrait are going to become true for students as they graduate PPS, and if the nine elements of the educator essentials are going to be true for the adults who work with students every day, the system itself will have to change to support that. So the educational system shifts are focused on the school district as a whole. They describe eleven key ways in which the entire system has to change in order to support the promise of the graduate portrait and the educator essentials. Three of those system shifts directly support graduate portrait and educator essentials elements. So racial equity-aligned systems and structures embeds racial equity into the decision-making and action-taking system-wide. Support for global stewards and ambassadors signals the importance of the global awareness and of climate justice. And this is both for students and for educators, and particularly with regard to professional development and learning opportunities. And a culture of physical and emotional safety takes proactive measures to create the conditions in which students can be reflective and empathetic and feel safe as they focus on their learning, supported by adults who can model the same traits. The other system shifts really commit to creating the conditions for change more broadly. So two of the shifts commit to system-wide supports for inclusive learning. So equity-centered, inclusive learning for students and adults, and mindful, inclusive practices that support the continuum of students with disabilities will ensure that each and every student can achieve the graduate portrait and that educ, and that supports educators to know how to, and supports educators to know how to use the supports that they will be furnished with. Two of the shifts support flexibility of time and place with a move towards more flexible environments and a reconsideration of where learning happens and how long it takes. Flexible, future-focused environments and redefining time and place for personalized learning will help the district to meet all students where they are. The remaining four shifts, which include transformative curriculum and pedagogy, which includes standard-based, standards-based curriculum, and linguistically and culturally responsive curriculum with equitable supports, cultivating system-wide learning and a diverse workforce, which, which commits to thoughtful, equitable, continuous learning for adults. Schools as community hubs, which commits to schools being connected to their communities and offering multiple services to support student learning. And a connected and transformative district. All of those four together assert that this district is making a commitment to being a connected, continuous learning organization that will honor its diverse communities and continue to evolve to meet students' needs in a changing world. So those are the, the system shifts, the changes that will need to happen system-wide. And obviously, they're big. There's a lot of work to be done there, so this is not an overnight thing. So in terms of the implications here, these shifts represent a major commitment and a major promise that you're making to your community. And probably, you know, it'll be a sort of a decade's work, really, with, to see them come to fruition through a series of aligned strategic plans, which you'll be launching soon, persistent action, and the partnership of the broader community.
I'm going to turn it over to Director Bailey to take on this next slide.
So a number of years ago, before I was on the board, I served on a district committee. And one of the first things we did was say, well, we've got a task. What are the values that are going to guide our work? What are, what are the PPS values? And there were no PPS values. So we spent a couple of meetings, cranking out values, wordsmithing, and then we got to the work of the committee. A couple of years after that, I was on another committee. Well, what are the values? We went through the same exact process, spending really a month or more doing that work. So one of the curveballs that we threw at our consultants was to say, we need, we need some PPS core values to come out of this process. And they very nicely altered the process so that, that got built in, that we got really positive community input into those core values. So I'm not going to read them all. They're all, they're all there for us to be held accountable to those going forward and how we operate as a board and as a district going from here.
Thank you, Director Bailey. I want to thank explicitly, again, every member of our community, students, families, educators, community members, both those who participated in the shaping of the vision, who gave feedback, who gave input, who came to the installation, who contributed a post-it note. This is, this is a reflection of you, our community. So as superintendent, I have the responsibility and honor to be the steward of this vision and partner with each and every one of you to make this a reality so that all these countless hours, these thousands of sticky notes you left behind, the great conversations that we've had, that they come to fruition. All that time and effort, I recognize, I want to recognize, gets us one step closer to really, now with this vision, work towards a definition of what we mean when we say a premier school system that we want for, for our children. This is my second rodeo with the Prospect Studio team. Thank you for your facilitation and your shepherding us through this process. There's a lot of school districts around the country that are realizing defining a collective vision is important, and you might find some, some similarities with how people are calling that out in the way of their graduate profiles. I, I think what distinguishes this one in Portland, however, is it goes not just one step further, it goes two steps further. It, it says, if this is what we want for our graduates, it understands that the adults around them have to also exhibit and model and develop in those skill areas as well. And that can only happen, not classroom and side, and side-by-side, but as a system. And so we have to make those, those shifts as well. What I like that's unique about our Portland setting is that it also has placed and planted a flag on issues of racial equity, on climate justice, and reemphasizes, again, the importance of our students whose future that we're talking about. So to everybody, thank you. I want to express my appreciation, and I know the team and staff are happy to take your questions.
Sorry, Superintendent Carrero, so we do have one more slide. And so this is, you know, again, just a reminder, this is a call of action. It is about, you know, individual effort, collective impact. So it will require every classroom educator, every paraprofessional, PPS staff, and administrator. It will require parents, business leaders, elected officials, nonprofit leaders, philanthropists, and most importantly, our students, to build a collective social movement to make this vision a reality. This is our shared, our community's shared outcomes. The next step in our journey is to make this a reality, and that begins now. And we want to hear our community's ideas on how to realize this vision. And we want you all to join us on this journey. So at this board, we're going to turn it over to the board for questions and comments.
Any questions or comments? I guess the comment just in that, oh yeah, turning that on. It was tremendous work, and it was daunting to think, how is this, how are they going to do this and come up with something that's this cohesive vision? And he did it. It's really amazing. It's something to be incredibly proud of, your work, but, but the work of our community that it took to lead this. So I just want to express my gratitude and know that now, as I'm moving off to just a role as a community member, it's impressive. And it will be something I'll continue to, you know, share with our community and, and to, I think it's going to help engage the community, continue to engage them. So thanks again for the tremendous work, and thank you to our community that have been involved in this process. And Jonathan, and for spearheading it. It's amazing. The, the other thing is I'm deeply grateful for the stakeholder groups that you, this process engaged with that aren't usually heard from or asked for their, you know, involvement in. So that was pretty magnificent. Thanks. Anybody else?
Just want to thank the team, primarily for ending on the last slide. So there's a saying, you know, you have to go slow to go fast. And I think there could be people in our community whose kids aren't being currently served, where this could have been a very frustr, it could be a very frustrating process for them to have watched this big, long, community visioning process that's very abstract, talking about kids from the far distant future. And yet, I, we needed to go slow to go fast, and I think now's the time that we go fast. And so ending with the call. And so ending with the call of action, I think, is really what we want to message out to the community, that we have a compelling vision, that I really believe reflects what we want for our kids. And so, let's go get it. Thanks for ending with a charge to all of us to not just admire the vision, but actually put it into practice and get acting.
I'd like to say to you all that somehow in this process, we created a lot of energy, which is not always easy to do in public processes. And in the time that we spent together, there was so much authentic idea generation and vulnerability and sharing of ideas and sharing of dreams and, you know, dashed dreams or ways that people have been let down by the system. But there really was a lot of openness and energy and vulnerability in the process, which you just don't see very often. And part of that was a lot of really great work up front in terms of getting a very diverse group of people in the room for this whole process. And I think it was especially gratifying at the very end to see, after the graduate portrait and everything was installed at Omsing, it was gorgeous, hot day, and we had so many families come, and they were so excited. And a lot of people commented on seeing, you know, what they had expressed show up in what was there for this vision. And, you know, we all have fatigue from greater or lesser degrees of involvement with this school district in the past, with, you know, public engagement that just doesn't get any traction, or doesn't feel authentic, or feels like checking a box, and was really not the sense that that's how people felt who were engaged in this process. So thank you for creating that magic, however you did, in terms of orchestrating things. And again, this is the first step, and we look forward to translating it into our real marching orders.
So I remember when a couple of us said, we want a community process that will involve, oh, I don't know, roughly 40 meetings. And I remember the look on everyone's face, just a little horrified. And there was, you know, one second of hesitation and then immediately followed by, well, okay then. And then you leapt in with both feet, all of you. This was an amazing effort, I think. I think it exceeded even my wildest dreams of what a community process could look like. And I vividly remember being in a couple of those community meetings where at least one person, often several, said, you know what, I've been doing these things with PPS for, I don't know, 15 years, and tell me why this is going to be any different. And we said, you're going to have to just suspend disbelief for a moment because this is going to be different. And I think we've demonstrated for this first phase that this was different. I mean, to echo what Amy was saying, I think we engage with the community in a very different way. I think it was much more authentic, much more productive. I think it was exciting. It was everything you want a community engagement process to be, and it rarely is. But the next step is, now we've got to do it. And so I too am glad that you ended on this call to action slide, because now we've got to do stuff. And in order for this to actually happen, PPS needs to get its act together, and we need to be very intentional, and we need to be focused on the kinds of things that we want to deliver to kids. But it is very clear, we cannot do this by ourselves. This is, in order for this vision to come to fruition, we have to have community involvement, real, authentic, like all-in, you know, leap in with both feet, all hands on deck. These are all of our children, and this entire community needs to help us. We need to know when to ask and what to ask for, and when people offer to help, we need to be able to let them, which has been problematic in PPS in the past. So, I mean, we've got to do our stuff, but if communities are really going to be, if schools are really going to be community hubs, then we need the community in there. So, anyway, thank you for all the work. This is, it's a beautiful document. It was a beautiful thing to watch, and I'm looking forward to phase two.
And if we may, one last comment from our Prospect Studio team.
Okay. We would just like to also say a few thank yous. So thank you very much to the Board of Education, to Chair Moore, and particularly to Director Bailey, who rolled up his sleeves and worked with the core team. But thank you all for your leadership and sponsorship of this process, because without that signaling from the top, nobody takes it seriously. So thank you for that. And thank you for Superintendent Guerrero, for bringing us in. Thank you for letting us do this work. It's been a great pleasure and a great honor. We'd also like to thank, I'd like to sort of mention a couple of other people. Nick Paisler, who's the outgoing student representative, who did a fantastic job and showed great leadership with the student work. That was really great. And also to Cheryl Pittman, who did some fantastic work behind the scenes to help everything go smoothly.
I'd like to also extend our immense thank you to the core team. Director Konstam, you talked about the magic, a little bit of magic around a different kind of stakeholder engagement. And I think part of that magic was the advice and the collaboration we were able to have with this cross-departmental district team. They dedicated so many days, at first I put hours, but it's really days and days, helping to coordinate this work, facilitate tables at convenings, facilitate, you know, stations at every community engagement session, all while fulfilling their regular, I know, roles in the district. This work could not have been accomplished successfully without their dedication, commitment, and honesty and insights. Sometimes they had to tell us, you know, that something could be done better, because they know they've got their ear to the ground, and they know that. So I just, this team was so incredible, we wanted to just kind of recognize and name each of them. So again, Director Bailey, for your boards, as a board representative to the core team, thank you for being there every step of the way. It wasn't just a representative that kind of, you know, as a figurehead, you were one of the core team members, and we really appreciate your insight and leadership. And then the others, Loretta Benjamin-Samuels, Dr. Jill Bryant, Stephanie Cameron, Dos Gupta, Camille Ededewbo, Danny Ledesma, Dr. Kimberly Matier, Roseanne Powell, David Roy, Alyssa Shore, Dr. Aurora Therry, and Courtney Westling. And a special shout-out to Jonathan Garcia, your chief engagement officer, and better known as really the team lead on this project. Thank you, Jonathan, for your unwavering dedication, your constant coordination, and your tenacity, working collaboratively with us through your vacations, through your weekends as needed, always available to ensure this work moves forward successfully, moved forward successfully. And we thank you not only for your leadership, but your make things happen disposition, which really helped to shepherd this process.
And as Chair Moore mentioned, the community being really involved, we also wanted to take the time to thank the 90 or so guiding coalition members who also gave up their weekends to do this work with us, as well as the admin team who are instrumental in pulling together those almost 100 people guiding coalitions and going through the day and making sure everybody was well-hydrated and whatnot. And then especially at the guiding coalition, as we saw with Andrew Harker, and as Director Brim Edwards mentioned, the students in the guiding coalition were instrumental, as we see from the graphic and as we know, at the heart of the vision truly is the students. And so we also wanted to name the students by name that we saw, some of them on the photos, but want to name, along with Nick and along with Andrew, there was Kara Bush, Hilario Gonzalez, Ailish Cook, Faisal Osman, Tori Segal, Carmella Thomas, Si Ming Wenger, and Shayla Zen. Thank you to them as well.
Thank you. The board will now consider Resolution Number 5909, a resolution adopting Portland Public Schools Reimagined, preparing our students to lead change and improve the world as the district's vision. Do I have a motion?
Sound moved.
Director Sparza Brown moves. Director Brim Edwards seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5909. Is there any public comment? Is there any further board discussion?
Just a thank you to Sarah Granger, going way back, if you're out there somewhere. This goes back to 2011, coming out of the failed bond, and the lucky lab group that she really helps kick off that process and that some of us were involved in, asked for an educational vision, the Jefferson Critical Friends, for those of you who are involved in that interesting process, again, time and again, people came and testified, saying we need an educational vision. Earlier, when we were talking about our superintendent's performance, about how many things that have been on the burner so long that are now finally actually happening, this is one of them.
Yeah. Amen. The board will now vote on Resolution 5909. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay. Resolution 5909 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
So before we move on to the next item, we want to return to the complaint. And I have wording on a new resolution. This would be Resolution 5921. And this is a motion to hold Complaint Number 201903 in abeyance until December 3, 2019. Okay. Do I have a motion in a second?
Sound moved.
Director Bailey moves. Director Brim Edwards seconds. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay. Resolution 5921 passes by a vote of seven to zero. Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So we move on to the next item, and I just want to point out, we're about half an hour behind schedule, so just keep that in mind as we.
I actually think we started about 20 minutes late, too, so for us.
Yeah, but we're still, okay, just keep it in mind.
And we voted on some things twice.
That's true. We could go for three. Okay. Next item, Benson Campus Master Plan revisions and updates. I'm going to do a little reprise of what's happened. At the conclusion of the Benson Polytech High School Pre-Design Diligence Process in February 2017, Board Resolution 5394 referred the Benson Polytechnic High School Modernization to voters in May 2017. After adoption of Board Resolution 5160, which directed the development of educational specifications and a master plan for the Benson campus, the board directed the superintendent to return to the Board of Education with a location analysis for multiple pathways to graduation programs. Following community engagement with a variety of stakeholders, the board approved a new building dedicated to Alliance Reconnection Program and Services, DART/Clinton and Teen Parent Program and Childcare Services that will be located on the existing parking lot area of the Benson campus, and requested an evaluation of Alliance at MEAC campus programming that will include feasibility of co-locating in the new MPG building on the Benson campus. How's that for a sentence? After reviewing several options, the board asked staff to bring back to the board a resolution to relocate Alliance at MEAC into the planning and pre-design for the new MPG building in the existing parking lot on the Benson campus. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce the item?
I'm going to ask our COO, Dan Young, to introduce staff and guests that are joining us on this topic, which we're glad to bring back here this evening to keep us on track.
Thank you and good evening, Superintendent, Board Chair and Directors. I'm Dan Young. I'm here with Brian Rullier, who's Senior Project Manager on the Benson Project. I have to admit that Chair Moore, you more or less stole my thunder right there. That was going to about be my intro, but the only final piece to that is, that is a nice, quick recap. We did present the analysis at the May 21 Board Work Session. There appeared to be strong support with co-locating, uniting the Alliance programs on the MPG building on the Benson parking lot at that meeting. So in your packets today is a revised staff report and resolution, and staff is prepared tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Say something about it, but I also want to just ask the question, what's the status of the parking? I was looking through the documents, and I'm not seeing something about the parking, because I know at one point there was a potentially a significant financial commitment to add some sort of parking, which I wasn't supportive of. So I'm curious, what's the status?
Real quick, I'll do a quick answer, and I'll let Brian add some details. So there had been expressed to the team from the stakeholders that there's going to be a loss of some parking, and parking is at a premium out there. So the team did an analysis of what it would take to add some additional structured parking, which is not cheap by any means. So that's what is in the analysis. At the work session, it did not appear that that was an option that looked favorable, so that is not a part of the recommendation, but the information is still in there. We do still continue to look at other potential parking solutions out there. None of those are really fully baked, so we don't want to bring those forward, but the team is still very cognizant of if there is a way to bring additional parking, that that is something that would be desirable.
So just to summarize, there's nothing in it now, but you may, you would come back if there were something added. And just for what it's worth, I'm not against parking in general, but it's so close to max, and just the financial costs and sort of the trade-offs involved.
Yes, we would definitely, if there was something of significance, of course, there is a source of significant cost, yes, we would definitely come back with that. I think what we hear, and again, I don't want to speak for the team, is that because of all the unique programs and the different times they use the facility, that having parking is a nice feature that they have out there, there will still be parking on-site, so they're not losing it all by any means. And you can park on much of the street out there at the moment, but that could go away in the future, so we're cognizant of that as well.
And to quantify, that's, that option one maintains 115 parking spots to, not just for Benson, but the multiple pathway program staff and activities as well, which we heard from the principals, you know, should go a long way to meeting the majority of their needs.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions, or?
So I'm just going to make a comment. I, since this is, especially since it's your last meeting, Director Rosen, I just want to say thank you, because I think we were sitting upstairs in a room late at night, wondering what we were going to do with this project. I think we were really stuck, and you encouraged us to look at option one. And I think this option, the brilliance of it, is that it does the right thing for the students in the program that are going for multiple pathways to graduation. And I also think it's a wise choice for taxpayers, and that I think we get some synergies, and students are going to have the ability to have some shared services, whether it's the health clinic, the teen parent program, food pantry, clothing closet. And that's, I think, makes a lot of sense. So I just want to thank you for that contribution. It's fitting that we're voting it on your, our last. It's fitting that we're voting it on your, our last, your last night.
And thanks to staff for working this through, because, going back to our conversation when we first came forward with the Alliance proposal, we said, hmm, isn't this only half of Alliance? And it kind of slowed things down and wasn't what was expected, but it was clear that it wasn't an equitable solution to just keep Alliance separated, because that's a artifact of history. So we are doing the right thing.
So I just want to point out, if we look at the PPS core values that we just approved, one of them is students at the center. Another one is racial equity and social justice, respect, relationships, partnerships, collaboration. Yeah, I think this checks a number of boxes on these values. So thank you for all the work that you've done. I think it's long past time that students in the multiple pathways programs had the kinds of facilities, had a facility that would truly meet their needs and be the kind of learning environment that they need, that they deserve.
I just have one thing to say. And I remember when we first started talking about the multiple pathways program, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated Superintendent Guerrero and staff going back to each of the programs, asking what they wanted and taking it seriously. And I think that's how we ended up where we are, and this is really the right thing to do, as Rita said, or as Chair Moore said.
Okay. Okay. So, the board will now consider Resolution Number 5910. Did we do this already?
No.
Okay. A resolution authorizing Benson Campus Master Plan Revisions and Updates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Bailey moves. Director Konstante seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5910. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment? Is there any further board discussion? Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 5910. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5910 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan and team. And if I could ask Assistant Superintendent LaFontaine and Karina Wolf to convey to our school leaders tonight's decision. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, Amendments to the 2019-20 Agreement between Portland Association of Teachers and Portland Public Schools. On Friday, June 15th, the Portland Association of Teachers ratified a number of amendments to our current collective bargaining contract, which runs through June 30th, 2020. The amendments cover a number of areas, and the vote comes after a series of interest-based bargaining sessions between PPS and PAT. We have been pleased by how throughout the process, both sides have remained steadfastly focused on how to best ensure healthy interactions between teachers and students. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce the item?
I'll be glad to introduce our Chief of HR, Sharon Reese, who will tell us more.
Good evening. I am Sharon Reese, your Chief of Human Resources, and I am joined this evening by our Senior Legal Counsel, John Stellwagen, who is, in addition to being an in-house attorney for us, was also a member of the PPS Interest-Based Bargaining Team. As you know, as part of our agreement with PAT on a one-year contract extension entered into earlier this year, we engaged in interest-based bargaining to address articles related to investigations and record-keeping, as well as the draft professional conduct policy. Our interests were founded on and continue to be founded on protecting students from predatory behavior, including implementing the Whitehurst Report recommendations, and ensuring fair and thorough investigations of potentially career-altering allegations against educators. So I'm gonna walk through a couple of the highlights for the collective bargaining agreement. We agreed that letters of expectation will also be retained in personnel files for six years, which is an increase from the current three years. Letters of expectation and other disciplinary action will remain in investigation files indefinitely. PPS will ensure employees receive written notification of investigation findings within 30 days of the conclusion of the investigation. And sexual misconduct investigations will be conducted by a subject matter expert, in keeping with the Whitehurst recommendations. Paid administrative leave pending investigation will be revised, and our, is revised in our collective bargaining agreement to add an option for the district to temporarily reassign employees, rather than place them in paid administrative leave. And in addition, we made commitments regarding our, some revisions to our professional conduct policy that led to the withdrawal and resolution of the demand to bargain that PAT had submitted previously. I know we're, we also made some commitments on the public records request, which I believe is coming up, and I will forego comments about that until we address that resolution. So we welcome your questions.
Any questions? No questions?
So, go ahead. This is the time to say something? So I'm gonna support the contract changes. I think there's some important provisions that were added, and I'm glad they were added in a spirit of collaboratively developed. And those things would include subject matter experts for sexual misconducts. Those, we'll have investigators that have some expertise. I think that's really important. In the past, we haven't been explicit about that. Prioritizing investigations for those that are on paid administrative leave, I think is the right thing to do. The fact that letters of expectations will be retained for six years instead of three is also an important change. There's also some things that aren't in the contract document that I think are important. One is a clear statement from the district that investigation files will be kept centrally and indefinitely, and investigation files will not be purged or eliminated, but they'll be kept centrally so that we don't have gaps in our knowledge. I also want to just point out, because when you look at the contract language, it's like, well, there's not that, you know, it seems, could be fairly sparse, but it, I think it's the totality of everything together. It's the trainings, the Title IX directors, an investment that we're about ready to make later tonight, and the adoption of a centralized electronic files filing system. So those are all positive things where I see coming together a more comprehensive system. I will say, I was disappointed that we came out of the process without, I think, I was expecting some specific written feedback from the Portland Association of Teachers on the professional conduct policy. We had, it's been out for a first reading since October of 2018. They demanded to bargain it. And I really believe that our policy will be better with their input and sort of their insights, because they live it every day, and I just think the policy will be better with, better understanding both what their concerns are and recommendations they have, because the policy, in essence, provides the guidelines and expectations for appropriate contact between staff and students. But while we didn't get feedback from the IBB process, I want to thank Carol Hawkins, fortunately she's not here tonight, but I want to thank her. She has provided a set of revisions of her understanding of some of the concerns that were raised of the process, and those revisions will be considered at our Thursday meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, so I think that's on, on our way. So Carol came out of a very intent, time-intensive process and turned around a set of revisions that I think will allow us to put, you know, one more piece of the puzzle together. So, you know, I think if we get all those pieces together, including tonight's contract changes, that if misconduct occurs, or if there's alleged misconduct, that we'll have better processes for the investigations. And the district's commitment to a centralized system of retaining investigative files will mean that many of the gaps that existed two or three years ago will no longer be, exist and will be better protecting our students. And also really providing clear guidance to staff of how to interact with our students, but so that we get the, the great value that comes out of our, our staff having strong relationships with students, but that we also know that we're ensuring sort of student safety and appropriate guidelines. So I'm gonna be supportive of the contract changes. And I want to thank the members of the IBB team for moving the process forward.
I want to add, Director Brim Edwards, that credit also goes to Mr. Stellwagen to my right, who worked many hours alongside Carol Hawkins in producing that draft policy. It's our strong intention to provide the, the necessary staff input and interest-based bargaining team input so that that policy is ready to go by the beginning of school.
One of the values that I want to speak to that is embedded in a couple of different places here, also is part of our training, is really looking at our process for investigations, because one of the problems that we were trying to address here was a lack of clear protocols around how to follow up on concerns. So it was very dependent on the leadership in the building, or the relationship between the teacher and, you know, the, the building leader, or someone in the central office. And what is really important to me here is that every concern about professional misconduct will now be investigated. And that means it will be documented in some way. And some of those might be very simple, and they might be dispensed within a day, and some of them may end up being complex and have, you know, considerable ramifications. But through a combination of language and training, and then records retention, we now are able to keep track of all those concerns and to, you know, keep them over time. And that's a huge, huge difference. So it's not just about how we deal with stuff on the back end and how long we keep the records, it's about the fact that their records are being generated from concerns, which was not the case.
And along with that, and we talked about this earlier, and not part of this agreement, but if we have a practice of every time we have a new principal in a building, that they do a file check to come up to, come up to speed, that that's, if that's, that's, I think, should be part of our orientation process. And it should be, should be called out as that, and not something that we should do or happens a lot of the time, but happens every time. I think would be closing one last little loop.
Thank you, Director Bailey. I completely agree. And I do just want to make the point that, yes, this is a greatly improved procedure, but procedures, procedures aren't going to do us any good if people aren't going to follow them. And this really is going to take a culture shift in Portland Public. And Superintendent Guerrero, I do want to say, I think you've done a terrific job starting that culture shift, and it's terribly important. But again, we have to see reports, records, investigations actually generated. Thank you.
So I want to speak as a member of the IBB team for PPS. Interest-based bargaining is intended to provide a forum for, for two parties who are in a negotiating relationship to, to focus on shared interests. And PPS has, in the past, made somewhat fitful efforts in that direction. But I have to say, I sat through, I believe, every moment of it, with the exception of two and a half hours that I spent at the Roosevelt graduation. It was, it was intensive, it was long. There was universal participation. And I have to say, in this instance, I think the IBB process lived up to its promise. I thought this was a really, kind of, okay, words overused, but I'll use it anyway. It was, it was kind of inspiring to see how these two, two parties, who have historically been in a challenging relationship, really embraced the central commitment to child safety and well-being. And I think what we've come up with as a result is a, a series of changes to the contract that were identified in the Whitehurst Investigation Report as being problematic in, in making it difficult, potentially impossible, for the district to identify educated, people in buildings who, who were exhibiting questionable behavior and who might be putting children at risk. And if you go back and look at the Whitehurst Report, what it says pretty clearly is that most of the problems were internal to PPS administration, that we did not have the structures and the systems and the processes and the protocols and the behaviors in place that would allow us to, as a district, to protect children. In the intervening years, since the Whitehurst investigation was, was delivered to us, it's important to note that there has been a tremendous amount of work done by PPS on its own structures to create the systems that are gonna preserve the safety of children. In addition to that, we have, I mean, there's been huge work in HR, and thank you to you two and everyone else up there. We have created new training systems, new trainings around child well-being and helping people identify predatory behaviors. We have new protocols that ensure that, that everybody is getting the trainings, and we have systems to, to double-check on that. And we have, I mean, there's been a whole series, we have a Title IX director, we have new policies that are in place around sexual... Not misconduct. So I'm talking about the, the new curriculum around, for students, around healthy behaviors, healthy teen behavior. And that has been a huge lift. We have engaged with outside experts in the field who are giving trainings to middle school teachers. They'll soon be giving trainings to our principals. We've, we've set up a whole series of, we've put a whole series of changes in motion that are going to, that are gonna protect children. This is one of the, this is one of the last pieces that we needed to tackle, and we did it. And we did it... And we did it in a spirit of cooperation and a shared commitment to protect children. This is a difficult topic for me, so forgive me. I'm proud of the work that the IBB team did on both sides. And I want to, I want to read a comment from Joy Ellis, who was one of the members of the investigation team on the Whitehurst investigation. She has, she has read the agreement that we came up with, and she has offered her commentary. And I'm quoting here. I should point out, she was part of the investigation team for the Whitehurst report, and after that, she has been doing some work on a consulting basis with PPS specifically around sexual conduct issues. Quote, "I have worked with PPS as a consultant since May 2018. And for the past year, I have witnessed PPS working to follow through on the recommendations in the investigation report. I think PPS has made significant strides to making the district a safer place for students, and is certainly moving in the right direction. Significantly, the district has been focused on trying to bring about a culture shift that would have a lasting effect on the safety and well-being of the students, rather than just checking the box on the recommendations in the report. That is harder work, and will have more lasting effects, and I'm impressed you went for the long-term approach. Having the investigation files stored and maintained centrally by HR, and having a record of all investigations, whether they result in discipline or not, is a huge gain for the district. Assuming someone is reviewing the database, the district should now be able to detect a pattern of misconduct that it previously was not able to detect. Also, if you train the administrators and their support staff well, then anything of value in the supervisor files should end up in the investigation files." I think it's significant that one of the investigators has given a positive recommendation. She has a positive view of the changes that we have enacted here. And I just want to say one last thing. Child predators are not large in number, but they are huge in impact, huge. Any child-serving agency has to assume that somewhere, there is going to be at least the potential for behavior that will harm children. I am very confident that among educators, it is exceedingly rare, exceedingly rare, to have an educator who would engage deliberately in this kind of conduct. But if there is even one, it's too many. And we are now taking steps that will make it possible for PPS to do everything that is humanly possible, to ensure that we are doing what we can to protect students. So, there you go.
And just because you already said it once tonight, I'll save you from having to say it again, Chair Moore, but thank you for all that great context setting about all the work that's been done in response to the Whitehurst report. And the very last piece is our legislative agenda, which was as high a priority as all of these other pieces. So if we can get those senators to come back to the chamber, I think we're going to pass our very important piece of legislation that came directly from the board's advocacy in response to this report, that changes the terms in terms of what constitutes sexual misconduct, as well as a couple of other really, really important provisions. And that's the last leg on the stool.
The professional conduct policy.
And the professional conduct policy, right. Which we had some in the process of IBB with the external presentation from CARES Northwest, really shed some great light on how to make sure that our professional conduct policy adheres with best practices in terms of creating a definition of what behaviors are, you know, how to define behaviors that are cause for concern. That was really, really an enlightening part of this process.
And what healthy relationships look like. And that the culture should be focused on promoting healthy relationships between adults and children.
Not outlawing caring relationships.
So I just had one sort of final thought, because I say, when you look at the contract language, it's like, oh, it's, there's not as much changes as you might think, because it's part of this bigger web of work. But there also were a number of protocols and practices that were agreed to. And I think it's still somewhat of a mystery to the larger community about what those things were, not only maybe principals who might be expected to actually implement some of the things, but other staff members, there's teachers, parents and community members. So I think there, it would be valuable for us to sort of be able to communicate to the broader community what those things are. So there's the contract which we're voting on tonight, and then these other things. And what do they mean, and how does it play out, so that we all have a common understanding? Because I think that's when you get a seamless system, is everybody has the same understanding of what the roles and responsibilities and the expectations are going to be. And I think, and I know some of it still needs to be written, but we need to be able to describe it to people, because lots of people, different people have roles in making sure that the agreements come to life.
Okay. The board will now consider Resolution Number 5911, a resolution to approve amendments to the 2019-20 agreement between Portland Association of Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Constan moves. Director Brim Edwards seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5911. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment? Is there any further board discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5911. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5911 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Okay. That was big.
Yeah.
We haven't even gotten to the budget yet.
Well, it's only 9:35. The next item is Resolution to Endorse Public Records Processing Guidance as Part of the PPS Memorandum of Agreement with the Portland Association of Teachers. So I want to frame this up a little bit. So I think there's been some considerable misunderstanding about the nature and the impact of the changes that we're proposing. And do you want to give just a very brief kind of factual description of what the...
I'd be happy to. So the purpose of the memorandum of agreement, which has not yet been finalized, but is in process, is to better inform and educate our employees about what the public records law requirements are, and how they impact their work, and to clarify the existing process for notification to employees, and provide transparency to that. That notice, specifically a seven-day notice, informs the public records officer's mandatory review of the privacy exemption with information that, by its very nature, is likely known exclusively to the employee. So specifically, what we committed to is preparing a frequently asked questions type of document that provides details to employees about what a public records request is, how it's processed, and describes commonly asserted exemptions, so an overview or summary of those issues. We also agreed to send out annual reminders to employees about email and other materials being subject to public records requests. We think this will both improve our employees' understanding, as well as the district's ability to respond to public records requests. And as is consistent with our current policies, employees are going to have that opportunity to be informed of the records requests, and to provide information, if it is relevant, on potentially sensitive personal or private information, as well as identify any records that would be related to the public records request. We agreed to a seven-day notice period, and there have been assumptions or conclusions that a seven-day notice would create delay in our process. That assumption or conclusion, in my opinion, is inconsistent with our experience about the process, and how long it takes, and how we move through those reviews, and the application of those statutory exemptions that we have to review.
So if I can say a few things. Actually, it's more than a few things. So I think it's very important to be clear that the proposed memorandum of agreement does not represent any change to our public records policy, which is called Public Access to District Records Number 2.50.010P, for those who want to look it up. The state statute governing public records imposes a test that public agencies must apply to balance the public interest against an individual's right to privacy in responding to records requests when considering personal or private records. It also requires that there be no undue delay in providing the materials to requesters. The change in implementation practices that this agreement contemplates will rarely, if ever, impact the district's duty or ability to respond to public records requests. So, one, the records policy we adopted not only conforms with the state statute, but goes even further in requiring that the district, quote, "construe the public interest liberally in favor of disclosure," unquote. That bias towards disclosure remains unchanged. PPS also has a responsibility to consider possible privacy concerns of employees. Our policy, as adopted by the board in 2018, includes a requirement to notify employees when a public records request may potentially involve, quote, "sensitive personal or private information," unquote. This is intended to provide an opportunity for employees to alert the public records officer to any extenuating circumstances that might warrant the assertion of privacy rights. For example, if the public records request process were being used for malicious purposes in the context of a domestic violence situation, or for harassment, the district would be required to consider denial of a request to protect the safety of that employee. A recent ruling by the DA on a case in a neighboring school district confirms that privacy rights may be asserted in extreme cases. In order for the district to apply the obligatory balancing tests, employees must be provided a reasonable amount of time to become aware of the records request, and inform the public records officer of any special circumstances. In the course of discussions with PAT, we agreed that a 24-hour window, which has been the district's practice in the last year or so, was unreasonably short and could potentially endanger an employee. The minor change in administrative protocols that we contemplate here provides more clarity on the time available to employees to express privacy concerns, and allows the district sufficient time to properly assess the applicability of the personal privacy exemption under the statute. Since the bias toward disclosure stated in our public records policy remains unchanged, we anticipate that few, if any, requests will be denied. The district also has a responsibility to produce records without undue delay. Since passage of this policy, PPS has endeavored to respond to all requests as quickly as possible, and we do not expect that this minor change in implementation will have, or we expect that this minor change in implementation will have little or no impact on the district responsiveness going forward. Currently, the average public records request gets a response in 19 days. Seventy-one percent of them are completed within 15 business days. Eighty-six percent are completed within 60 days. Moreover, in light of the volume of public records requests, which is, I believe the number is 256 requests in 2018 alone, that produced tens of thousands of documents. We still have what I think is a pretty remarkable track record of producing documents. In light of the volume, PPS has recently allocated an additional .5 FTE to the task of doing records reviews, demonstrating our commitment to fulsome compliance with the statute. We believe that this change in protocol will better inform the identification of responsive records, and will not result in any delay on the district's timely fulfillment of public records requests. We are confident that requesters will not experience any meaningful change in our current responsiveness to requests as a result of this minor adjustment to internal protocols. I totally understand why people are skeptical. Given PPS's history of, of, how shall I put it, not nonresponsiveness, you know, bias toward lack of transparency in the past, I completely understand why somebody would immediately leap to a conclusion that this is an attempt to hide the ball. As a member of the IBB team, what I can say is, not only was it not PPS's team's interest in delaying in any way public disclosure, it was also not PAT's. What they were talking about genuinely was protecting their members from harassment and, and a situation that could be, that could have life-changing impacts because of the personal nature of the information that would be disclosed. So I'm pretty sure nothing I said is going to convince anybody who is determined to think the worst of PPS, but I felt compelled to make a try. Any other comments?
Very briefly, thank you, Chair Moore. After an exhaustive review of the statutes, I completely agree. And thank you for putting it so well.
I think the other thing that's worth pointing out is that there is nothing in this minor change to protocols that broadens the potential for exemptions. The personal privacy exemption still stands. This does not add anything to it to sweep in more prospective requests under that exemption. So to think that it sort of opens the floodgates in any way also is not accurate.
Which of us, at the end of a long day, has not blown off looking at email until a day later? And on that basis... And on that basis -- or two. Okay, true confessions here. And on that basis alone, 24 hours is way too short a time. The assumption that this is going to add seven days on to the release period is mistaken. You know, I think it's important and respectful, in a situation like this, to ask the person who actually does the job, how is this going to impact release times? And Ryan, who's, again, these are, some of these data requests are humongous. He's done incredible work, and he's very clear on what you said, that this is, in most cases, not going to affect the release time at all, and only, you know, we're talking a day or two delay for, in most of these cases, on the few that actually where there might be an extension. So no material impact. I also want to say, taking a step back and thinking about the business that we do as a board, and is this the right venue for dealing with an issue like this? And I don't think it is. This isn't policy. This is a procedure. The 24-hour turnaround that Ryan adopted was, I think, his decision, or maybe his and his supervisor's. And he's the one that, again, we have an interest in making sure our policy is followed, that there is absolute, as fast as possible, releasing data, but following the disclosure guidelines as well, protecting privacy, the two things that we have to balance. And I think it's administrative protocol that should have happened through that venue and not through a huge board discussion. And that has been misframed in the media.
So I'm not going to support the resolution, and I think there's a real balancing act, and there's a tension inherent in our public records policy. And the tension is that we're a public institution, and we need to do our business in public, and that most, the vast majority of our records are public records. And we also need to protect highly sensitive or personal information of our staff that may fall under the personal privacy exemption. So how do we weigh that? And we also need to follow the, not in the letter, the spirit of undue delay. And just as some background for why I'm going to land on the no. So starting in August of 2017, the Policy and Governance, at that time Task Force, started a long process to revise our policy around public records. And to Director Moore's point, you know, I think there wasn't a clear policy, and certainly there wasn't a default to transparency and to release and not to, like, maximize our use of exemptions. So we started the process with, I think, a goal in mind of what we wanted to accomplish, and we also wanted to accommodate some changes in the public records laws. We had a long public process with active communication, participation from community members, reporters, editors, the Society of Professional Journalists. I think it's probably the most input we've received on any of our policies, and over a long, sustained period of time, I'm just looking at the number of meetings we had on the topic, and we had multiple first readings because that referred through the iterations. And at a certain point in time, when we were ready to move the policy, we had demand bargain from the Portland Association of Teachers, and they brought forward three changes. And the three changes were all, I think, fairly closely related. One was adding a sentence to the policy to maintain confidentiality through a records appeal process, because obviously if you release the record and there's an appeal process, that you haven't protected, you potentially haven't protected something that might fall under that exemption. Then PAT also added language, asked for language that said, "Upon receiving a public records request seeking potentially sensitive personal or private information related to a staff member, the district shall notify the staff member and the staff members' union if represented in writing of the existence and nature of the records request." And then they had a third request as well. Those first two pieces, we adopted into the policy. We discussed it. We thought they were reasonable, and we adopted it in. They also ask that we incorporate other language, which was, at the time, a five-day review period, and we decided not to include that in. So while it's not in our policy, we did discuss it and deliberately decide not to include it. And I want to share why I was comfortable with that, because I did think that we should put in language into the policy that we were going to notify an employee. But why I was comfortable with us not adding the set review period, you know, so there was this tension of undue delay, but also I was comfortable because our public records office, HR, and the general counsel's office, I think, really bring a care and a thoughtfulness and respect for our employees to their work. And at the time, I believe they brought that care and thoughtfulness and balanced it with both the letter and the spirit of the public records law. So we got to keep records moving, comply with a no undue delay, but also being really thoughtful about the impact of employees on different records requests. So this past year, since we, the board, the board adopted the policy without that review language, and this past year, we've had hundreds of public records requests, as Chair Moore mentioned. But there's not any evidence to suggest that records fitting the definition of the personal privacy exemptions were released, because I believe staff continued to bring that care and thoughtfulness to their work. And they did their job, and there wasn't the release of many public records that related to be contested. So I understand the concern of teachers, because essentially, you know, we didn't have that same system of public records and sort of the care and thoughtfulness of how things were reviewed. So I can understand why they would have that potential concern, but I think this last year demonstrated, demonstrates that we can comply with the letter and the spirit of the law and be mindful and protective of those records that employees can justify that there is a personal privacy exemption. So given that this was outside of the scope of what the board had originally discussed about what was going to be bargained in IBB, and the fact that I believe staff continues to bring great care to the work and the way in which they handle our employees' records, especially ones that are highly sensitive, and the fact that this was agreed to in a non-public process, I'm not going to be able to be supportive of making the change in this way. I feel like we had a process in which people in good faith came and presented their points of view, and, you know, sometimes the board made a decision to support the point of view of staff. Other times, as long as it wasn't in conflict with the public, the spirit and the letter of the public records law. And other times, we agreed with community members about the approach we were going to take. So I would have, I think we get stronger opinions, or stronger policies when it's, we have all the stakeholders at the table, and then we can make the decisions based on that. I'm assuming this is going to pass tonight, and I'm going to continue to assume that the public records office are going to be able to sort of hold these dual values, which are protecting our employees and any highly sensitive information, but also to follow the letter and the spirit of the law. I want to, do want to note that today, we received public comment from the Society of Professional Journalists expressing, I think, just some, they expressed a number of opinions, but sort of in conclusion that the MOA that includes this should be carefully crafted and vetted by the public. I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation, and that hope that staff, assuming this resolution is going to be adopted, that they do consult with other stakeholders in the process and how we craft this in a way that both honors our, and respects and takes care of our employees' sensitive records and allows us to fully comply with the letter and the spirit of public records.
So I'm also going to be a no vote on the resolution. I agree with everything Julia said. I can't say it as eloquently. I just, I don't, I just have a few points. I don't agree with, obviously, with the inclusion of the seven-day review period. I feel like exactly what Julia said. We set policy. We did it through a very public process. We got a lot of feedback, and we already discussed this issue. So I think we're undermining the work that we've already done. And now we are revisiting this issue in private. Since the policy has worked to date, I don't see why we need to make a change, and I would feel a lot more comfortable if we were going to say the MOA would be negotiated, but it would be vetted publicly, consistent with the way we set the policy originally.
This is not a change to our policy.
Director Peramardes, I appreciate the framing of the respect and care and the recognition of how the departments here in the central office approach these issues with respect and care and thoughtfulness. I certainly, my intention is to approach all of my work with respect, care, thoughtfulness, and accountability as well. And that is my experience with the human resources team, with our legal team, and certainly with our public records office and our public records officer, in how these issues are approached. I would like to make two points. One is that no matter how much care and respect and thoughtfulness those groups bring to the public records review, we don't necessarily have the information that an employee who is subject to a public records request and disclosure would have about the application of the privacy exemption. And it is ensuring that we have that information in the process that I think is critical to our approach. So those intentions also need to be informed. The second thing I would say is, in my discussions with our public records officer, I would agree that we have not, we don't believe we have had a situation where we have released information that should have applied, a privacy exemption should have applied. But we have had situations where information that was provided to the employee, excuse me, provided by the employee, did impact our public records officer's decision to exert the exemption. And once information is disclosed, then that's a bell that cannot be unwung. So we take that concern and that obligation very seriously.
That's the process working, when they provide information and we make a decision based on it?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there more discussion? I have a modest amendment to the language of this resolution that I'd like to bring forward, but we can finish any discussion here before.
Well, we have to do a motion in a second before we can do that. Okay. Board would now consider Resolution Number 5912, Resolution to Endorse Public Records Processing Guidance as Part of PPS Memorandum of Agreement with Portland Association of Teachers. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Director Espaza Brown moves. Director Anthony seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5912. Is there any public comment? Okay. Okay, any board discussion? Any further board discussion?
I would still think that I'm somewhat in agreement that this memorandum is not the way to go, that whether it gets voted up or down, we could have just done it without a memorandum. And I think that would have been a much cleaner process. And I see no reason why we can't just do it without a memorandum and do it administratively and figure out what's the right, 24 hours. Just because it's worked so far with 24 hours doesn't mean there isn't a chance. I mean, I think it's, if anything, it increases the chance of something going wrong in the future. So administratively changing that timeline makes sense to me, using the best judgment of our staff.
But it didn't, wasn't, that wasn't the agreement that would be in a MOA?
The agreement was that it would sit in a MOA. That's correct.
Versus us just doing it administratively? I mean, that's --
Which, by the way, will be more transparent than doing it just administratively, which we could have done.
Well, I don't think we should have done it either way, but.
Okay.
So you're happy with 24 hours?
No, I believe they provided the care and protected our employees' sensitive information.
I'm asking again, you're happy with 24 hours?
I think, I think it hasn't always been 24 hours. That may be the standard, but my, my understanding from conversations with the office is that they take care to get, if they feel like they need the information and the records aren't particularly sensitive, that, it's not my understanding that 24 hours is a hard and fast, they just press the button and send it off. I don't know if you want.
Except when it is. Okay.
I'd like to move a resolution, please, and, excuse me, an amendment to this resolution. And one of the things that is really most germane to me about this conversation is making sure that not only do we not broaden the potential for being looser on our definitions of personal privacy, but also that we don't construe in any way, that we are broadening that. And the way this resolution is written, I concur with the concern expressed by the Society of Professional Journalists about the language, which, our language is, the Board of Education hereby endorses the inclusion in the MOA of the seven-day review period for employees when public records requests potentially include sensitive personal or private information, which is, that is not the language of the statute. That's the language of our policy. And I would feel more comfortable with this proposed language. The Board of Education hereby endorses the inclusion in the MOA of the seven-day review period for employees for public records requests that the district flags as potentially being subject to a personal privacy exemption. This will allow employees to provide information that enables the district to assess whether a personal privacy exemption is applicable under the public records law. And the, I think this is a salient point from the Society of Professional Journalists, that in contrast to the district's language quoted above, the only statute that allows for any sort of delay applies only to records to which certain exemptions apply. It does not mention, quote, "potentially sensitive personal or private documents." So it's, I would just like to change that so that it only refers to the personal privacy exemption. And I can, I'll read that proposed language again, but this actually brings up a broader issue, which we haven't addressed tonight, which is that this is not a blanket delay, or doesn't allow for the potential of a blanket delay. It only allows for, and, excuse me, it's inappropriate to use the word delay at all. It only allows for that potential in the few cases where it appears that the personal privacy exemption may be applicable under the law. Otherwise-- Otherwise, it does not kick in the employee's ability to review or delay. And I'm not sure that's ma, been made entirely clear from our conversation tonight.
So that actually raises a question. So it's, it's a good point, but it raises a question that, I don't know who's the public records expert, but. So say there's a request for information that names a public employee of ours. And we don't have any idea whether it's sensitive or not. Are we notifying them when we get the request that names their name? And that starts at seven days? Or is it when they get notified then, and then when the, the information actually, our public information officer gets the record and he reviews it, is that when he notifies the employee again because he's seen what it is?
It's, it's my understanding that our Public Records Officer will proactively notify an employee who's specifically named in a request. And perhaps Senior Director Kramer has a different, or would like to add to this. So I will defer.
I'm just trying to understand when.
Yes.
Yes. And, and I think it, there's such a wide variety of possibilities with how records are requested. So in your example, a record's requested about an employee, we may not know the contents of those records at the time, but our records officer does notify the employee that a record has been requested, and this is the nature of that request. So there's a possibility, if the nature of the request right up front indicates a personal privacy exemption may apply, then yes, I, I think in practice, the clock starts then. If, if it's not evident and it is uncovered later in the review of those records, then I think it's later in the process, perhaps as those records are being reviewed. What I know in how Ryan is currently applying, or our Public Records Officer is currently applying this practice is it will begin to start sooner in the process when it's not evident at the beginning. So as he's reviewing records, normally we would wait till the end of the process before notifying, you know, the employee that here's what the records are. Now that will happen sooner, the minute an employee's information is uncovered. So I think that's, that's, that's why we're comfortable knowing that it's not going to, you know, tack it on to the end or delay it from going out the door.
So I want to be, I want to be clear that there are concurrent processes that are happening and then notification doesn't happen at the end when the records, the contemplated application of this is not that Ryan waits until the end of the, of the legal review, of the gathering of the information, all of that. Once it becomes clear in the process that there's a employee who may be impacted, that is when the notice happens so that the notification and those other processes and reviews are running concurrently.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Is, so.
Yes, sorry.
That's, that's why in the analysis and in the conversation in IBB, it was clear that it was very unlikely to result in a delay because that notification happens concurrent with the discovery and with the queue of all the requests and how they're processed.
So, but does the notification start when the request comes, in those that are, I know, understand there's like named and then there's, oh, it turns out they're impacted. But if it's your named one, so you name, the Public Records Officer sends out a notice, like you're named, and that's what starts the seven days?
It depends on the nature of the request, I think. And so if the, if the nature of the request makes it clear that it's likely to involve records that identify some sort of privacy or that involves some sort of privacy exemption, he's most likely going to send out a notice at that time. There are some times where a request is more vague or general, where it may not come to light until he's doing the review and learning what records are responsive, that he then identifies that it's a, something that would bring to light the, or involve an assertion of the privacy exemption. So it, it really is kind of case dependent, but as a result, because we think there's typically sometime that, that it's in the process, it's not, not anticipated that it's going to be at the very end and cause undue delay by tacking on a seven, seven day window at the end of every one of these. If that was contemplated, I think we would have had a different discussion, but instead it's, it's anticipated that it's going to be sometime during the, the collecting of documents and determining what's response, what's responsive, that, that, at that point, he's going to provide the notice and as he's completing the, the request and coordinating with that individual, that that's, the seven day window is going to occur during that time period, not, thereby not resulting in, ideally not, not typically resulting in any sort of, of delay. And if it is delay, I think it would be short. But it is case by case.
Does that fit the definition of undue delay, short? And I'm, I'm just curious. I don't, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just.
I, I think, well, I don't know that, I don't think short is, is, is contemplated. That's, that's my probably paraphrasing, but I think that we anticipate that it's not going to result in undue delay.
I think that was affirmed by the state Public Records Officer when we asked for guidance on this.
Okay, so we have, we have a, a motion for the existing resolution on the table. Do we have a motion for, do you have language that you'd like to move?
Yes. And again, the, the meat of this is just to remove the language that says potentially includes sensitive, personal, or private information and basically replace it with language that says that may trigger the privacy exemption. And the reason being, and I'm going to take this straight from the Society of Professional Journalists, is the current PPS language in SBJ's view risks being interpreted broadly in conflict with the organs, records law, instruction confirmed by a 2016 Supreme Court ruling that exemptions being interpreted narrowly in favor of disclosure. So I move an amendment to Resolution 5912. The Board of Education hereby endorses the inclusion in the MOA of the seven day review period for employees for public records requests that the district flags as potentially being subject to a personal privacy exemption, period. This will allow employees to provide information that enables the district to assess whether a personal privacy exemption is applicable under the public records laws, period.
Do you have that language?
Okay, you have it? Okay. So, so we have, do I have a motion in a second?
You have a motion?
I have motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Director Konstant moves. Director Espaza Brown seconds a motion to amend the resolution with the language as stated. Okay. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of accepting the amended language, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no.
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. The, the motion to amend the resolution passes by a vote of six to zero, six to one. Okay. So now we vote on the underlying resolution number 5912 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The resolution 5912 passes by a vote of five to two.
One abstention.
One abstention, sorry. Okay.
Who's the abstention? Oh, you, based on the difference.
Okay, so.
Based on governance.
Okay. Resolution.
Didn't get a chance to, you didn't ask for discussion.
Chair Moore, can you please tell me who voted no and who abstained?
Directors Brim Edwards and Rosen voted no. Director Bailey abstained. Okay, so Resolution 5912 passes by a vote of four to two with one abstention. Okay. Thank you. Next item, next item is adoption of the 2019-20 budget. I will now recess the board from its regular meeting and convene as the Budget Committee. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to make any comments about the 2019-20-20 budget?
Resolution 5912 to impose tax and adoption.
Yes. Good evening, Board Chair, Member of the Boards, and Superintendent Guerrero. I am here presenting to you the resolution to adopt the 2019-20 budget that was approved by the Budget Committee and also to levy taxes for the year 2019-20. And I am asking that you will approve, adopt, the adoption of the 2019-20 budget.
Okay.
As approved.
Second.
Well, hang on, hang on. The board will now consider Resolution 5913 to impose tax and adoption of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget for school district number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Director Bailey moves. Director Konstant seconds the motion to adopt Resolution Number 5913. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment? Okay, is there any board discussion?
So I'm going to spare, spare any discussion, but I would like, instead of having this discussion tonight, at the last meeting, as we were approving the budget, there was quite a lengthy discussion about how we were going to be allocating some additional FTE. And I would like a report that tells us, in the adopted budget, where we landed on all the blended classrooms, but more importantly, we also had, I think, seven FTE, seven or eight FTE that went to take, make, make a step towards more equitable middle grades offerings. And I have sent a series of questions about it. I'd like to just get an understanding of how we're heading into the next budget year, how that landed, because I know it was a little bit last minute and here we are at the end of May, how we're going to staff this. So I'd love to, at some point, not love to, I'd like to request that after the budget's approved, that we get a report on where those FTE went, how it improved equity.
Yes, so, thank you Director Brim Edwards. The, the board identified a couple priority areas. Of course, the allocation of those FTEs is pretty management oriented, but I did provide the board in my last update and communication, the specific schools where those positions ended up, and spoke to the four or five blends as well as the middle schools. And so our principal supervisors, as they normally would with a staffing allocation, are working with principals about how, what kinds of electives all open up, what makes sense at their particular school community. And so that's the process we're, we're undergoing now. But per, per sort of the board's expressed interest in alleviating in those areas, we worked pretty quickly to distribute those.
Right. And if I may further add, that the staff is working on reconciliation between the approved budget version with the adopted, as well as in the September, when we have the warm bodies in the seats, we will do another reconciliation. And I am proposing to bring back to the board a reconciliation of all the FTE, sometimes in the late fall. Would that be acceptable or would you like the information a little bit sooner?
So I, I don't, I can't speak for anybody else. What I primarily am interested in is the sort of spirit of not, not where the FTE landed, but that we actually improved the middle grades offering at the under-enrolled K8s. And so I just wanted to see how that gets played out.
Sure.
So I'm less concerned about whether it was like point four FTE or, I, I want to understand that we're actually, that, how we're impacting students in a positive way that are, have been in a very inequitable.
Absolutely.
Middle grades experience.
Absolutely.
I think when we left the conversation in that last budget discussion, Deputy Superintendent Cuellar was unsure whether or not he would be able to, you know, create the schedule changes and hire the teachers to fulfill that request for seven additional FTE. So it's, he, he needed to go back and see if pragmatically he could make that happen.
Definitely.
His team could make that happen. So I think that's what we're looking for, is to see, were we able to deploy those resources for next year or was it not practical?
Right. Most definitely. Thank you so much for, for reminding me of that. I am certainly will go back to the team and get some answers and together we will bring back to the board some answers on that matter. Thank you. Is there any other questions?
I'm not sure what you're conveying, CFO Lee.
Yes.
So I know that our Chief of Schools is working with our principal supervisors. Those allocations have been made to specific schools, which I shared with the board. Now they're working with principals around factors like scheduling and personnel and the assignment process of employees and, you know, getting some input from community around some of those offerings they may want to expand in. So that, that's the process that we've been engaging in. So it'll be an improvement. It won't be perfect, it never is, but I think it'll be a step forward.
Yes. Superintendent, thank you for the clarification. And I think what I was just trying to convey is that we will continue to report back to the board, probably through either the superintendent or Dr. Guerrero, of the progress and of any new development. Would that be okay? Great. Thank you. Is there any other questions I can answer the board tonight? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as always, if you have any questions, just let me know later. Thank you.
Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 5913. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Any abstentions? Resolution 5913 is approved by a vote of six to one, six to one. I will now adjourn, adjourn the board as the Budget Committee and call the board back into its regular session. The board will now consider the remainder of its business agenda. Are there any items on the business agenda that you'd like to pull out for separate discussion and vote? Okay. Ms. Powell, are there any changes to the business agenda? No? Do we have any public comment? Okay. Do I have a motion in a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Konstant moves. Director Brim Edwards seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Is there any board discussion? All in favor of adopting the business agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Okay.